So important for so long, they feel like they get left out or deprioritized for other wealthier neighborhoods.
You're not going to see the underground work, some biofiltrations that you'll see, you'll see some trees, but also has educational signage, all these aesthetics that the community benefit as we're investing in our sewer and water infrastructure.
You know, we may be in a fiscal crisis, but as long as we can collaborate and be creative, we can make projects like this. CD14 is here to work with you to find these creative solutions even of this type.
You might not know the name or have any awareness of this 1898 legal case, but the landmark ruling is still being talked about today. A panel at El Pueblo discussed the United States versus Wong Kim Ark.
We are the Chinese American Museum in Los Angeles, and I'm moderating a panel called Advancing Equality, United States versus Wong Kim Ark with experts and community members about how important this legal case is. Wong Kim Ark was born in San Francisco, and so he was automatically a U.S. citizen at that time. He went to China for a visit, and when he tried to come back, they said that because his parents were immigrants, he did not have the rights of U.S. citizen, even though he was born in the United States. He fought that case, and that case went all the way to the Supreme Court justice, and they ruled in his favor in 1898, saying that if you're born in this country, you automatically have the rights of U.S. citizenship regardless of your parents' immigration status.
I'm very proud of my great-grandfather Wong Kim Ark. I feel privileged to be here and other people recognize what he did. His struggle winning birthright citizenship, it validates my life. I feel lucky to actually contribute to whatever's happening now. But on the other hand, I really feel all this effort should never have been necessary. That birthright citizenship, that question was answered over 125 years ago. We're fighting an old battle.
What we want to do is educate people on this important legal case, a precedent case, Wong Kim Ark, and what is the significance of birthright citizenship and what impact it has had on Asian-American communities, but all immigrants and refugees. You know, citizenship for immigrants is so vital because it protects their rights, it gives them protection. It also gives them opportunities to participate as full members of civil society and participate in the United States and its democracy.
The Board of Public Works has a new president. LAX carries out its full-scale emergency exercise, and the electric Dash Pacoima bus goes into service. The story's up next on City Beat.
The L.A. City Department of Public Works has announced that Commissioner Steve Kang has been elected president of the Los Angeles Board of Public Works. Kang is the first Asian-American to hold this position in the board's history. Appointed by Mayor Karen Bass, Kang's election during Asian-American Native Hawaiian and Pacific Islander Heritage Month is a notable milestone for the community. Kang's prior experience includes serving as vice president of the Central Area Planning Commission. As board president, Kang will oversee public infrastructure, services, and sustainability projects critical to the city's future. For more information, visit dpw.lacity.gov. Los Angeles World Airport's LAWA recently conducted its full-scale emergency response exercise known as AEREX, the unrehearsed emergency simulation test disaster planning, and is required at least once every three years by the Federal Aviation Administration. Around 400 participants took part in the exercise, including first responders, law enforcement, airline personnel, staff, and about 150 volunteers who portrayed injured passengers. According to LAWA, the test helps the airport strengthen coordination, identify improvements, and ensure it is prepared to effectively respond to any emergency situation. For more info, visit lawa.org/news-releases. L.A.'s Department of Transportation marked the beginning of Dash Pacoima, a new all-electric bus service operating in the San Fernando Valley. According to Councilmember Imelda Padilla, the new route on the Van Nuys Corridor lays the groundwork for a connected and sustainable future across the valley. Councilwoman Monica Rodriguez, who helped secure funding for Dash Pacoima, said that safe, reliable, public transportation remains a priority for the community. Dash Pacoima will operate on weekdays from 6:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. and on weekends from 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. with service every 30 minutes. Fares are 50 cents in cash and 35 cents with a tap card, but to celebrate the service, Angelinos can ride Dash Pacoima free through May 31st. For more information, visit ladottransit.com.
We know moms make a lot happen every day, and Councilwoman Heather Hutt and her colleagues know that, too. To honor the occasion of Mother's Day, they hosted a musical program for moms to relax and enjoy.
It's an amazing day. We're celebrating Mother's Day in the 10th District. Myself, my colleagues, we're celebrating the people that nurture our city.
We have the Mother's Day Music Festival here in Michelle Obama Park to celebrate all of our moms.
They did an amazing job just making it just welcoming and all the mothers feeling special. And me, too, I'm feeling special.
It's very much an honor to be a mom. I am a mom for so many reasons, and what I mean by that is I have children that I gave birth to, I have been a foster mother, and I run an organization to help mothers and children. And so I'm a surrogate mother in a way to all those hundreds of young women that have come through our programs.
Sometimes in City Hall, we have very tough issues, but we know that what really holds up in the community is the moms, grandmas, aunties, and so taking the opportunity to celebrate them is very important.
I'm blessed to have my sons with me today. We're all celebrating Mother's Day.
You see this beautiful daughter right here? I'm supposed to be her inspiration, but believe it or not, now she's my inspiration.
Motherhood is a blessing, but motherhood is also a lot of work. And moms are juggling so much right now. They're juggling education, they're juggling work, they're trying to achieve this work-life balance. So to all the mothers out there, just do your best.
There was some Hollywood horror at the first mystery market and scary movie marathon held at the Lancashire, I mean, Lankerscream Arts Center. It was all frightful in the best way.
So today, what's happening here at the Lancashire Arts Center is the first-ever Lankerscream Mystery Market and Movie Marathon. What we have here is about 13 vendors selling horror movie-themed merchandise. We have coffee, we have tattooing, and we're just here to make sure the community knows about the center, uplift the arts here in the Arts District, and make sure that everyone knows that this center is for everybody. Part of my job at the North Hollywood Neighborhood Council is to make sure that the arts come back to the Arts District. So using the Lancashire, we're here to make sure that vendors have their space to sell their things, and we're using film as the thing that connects everybody. We feel that pop culture and film are a central cultural force. We want to make sure that everyone has a chance to have access to it by offering free or low-cost programming.
So Lancashire Arts Center is here to keep North Hollywood a fun place for the North Hollywood citizens to come out and play. We emphasize our dance and music and theater and film and culture programs that are going on here. So today, we have Horror Vibes Coffee as our partner for this event, and they curated a selection of different local artists that are here to vend their art.
I actually came here from North Carolina. I really just wanted to find a community of people who just really enjoy horror and art on the same level that I do, which is just like really much about the aesthetic, things that are weird, things that are creepy, but also very cute in a very unconventional way. I'm very inspired by anime, and I really like exploring with textures. I'm a really big fan of worms, intestines, just things that are a little bit gross. I love being very hands-on, which is why I make handmade magnets and screen printing. And overall, I really came out here because I really wanted to find a community of people who love art the same way that I do.
If you like anything that's spooky, horror, or anything of that nature, this is definitely a place to come. And everyone here is very friendly, very open, and everyone's welcome here. So whatever you're into, I'm sure you're going to find what you like. This event today is amazing because even if you just come to shop, they also have free movies you can come and watch. So it's a really cool event.
The General Services Department supports the city in many ways, including maintaining police vehicles. create internship opportunities for Angelinos who don't mind rolling up their sleeves to fix a problem.
GSC is the support department for all departments. We support LAPD, fire department, helicopters, over 11,000 pieces of equipment. So we're the individuals behind the scene.
I worked for 32 years with the city, and most of my career was with fleet services. I've been a heavy-duty equipment mechanic, an equipment specialist, safety and compliance office, fleet services.
Like train, evaluate, hire. Obviously, we have a lot of training, a lot of background.
This was last year's standing insta completed course, lots of certificate, money available, they came back.
So the internship program for the equipment mechanic is a program that we started last year.
It's a paid internship, which is a great advantage for the students.
It's a 10-week program that gives young adults with automotive background the opportunity to experience what it's like to work for the city of L.A. as an equipment mechanic. Today, we're going to be doing a tour with the students from the other Unified School District, and we're going to tour them in our facility here that incorporates about seven different shops. We're hoping that they get a feeling of what it's like to work here.
The main thing on this program is to get them started, to get them an area to where they feel comfortable taking the next step towards their future.
Upon completing the internship, I started, came here because I wanted some shop experience, and I was also looking forward to being able to put down on my resume that I worked for the city for a little bit. And when the opportunity came, I just ran with it, and I pretty much haven't looked back since. I'm very fortunate for it to have happened to me.
The young adults, they will gain a lot of experience in the field of automotive repair, but they also will receive a certificate of completion that they can use to apply for another city job.
The careers through the city of Los Angeles are vast.
The city is well compensated, has great benefits, which is the best part about working for the city.
You might like it, you might realize it's not for you. You never know what will happen. You might make something out of it, and it might just be the best thing that you've ever attempted.
It's like anything else. If you don't try it, you don't know what's going on. If you don't get involved and see what's out there, you'll find the city has so many different opportunities for people to come in and so many different jobs. We go back years ago, one of our garage attendants, he became gentleman, a garage attendant, from the bottom to the top. So it's all about doing the work and people recognizing what you do and you promote it.
It's pretty dirty, it's grimy, but I mean, it's something that someone has to do, and I'm very proud to take part in it because I play a very crucial role in the system here for the city of L.A.
In this week's feature story, we meet the L.A. Marathon Man, Murphy Ryan Schreiber. He was in conversation with our Maria Hall Brown about the inclusivity of a marathon and how such a large-scale event has also become a community occasion.
Inspired by the Summer Olympics of 1984 here in Los Angeles, the L.A. Marathon has been a remarkable part of L.A. for over 40 years. Today, I'm delighted to be joined by the chief operating officer of the L.A. Marathon, Murphy Ryan Schreiber. So nice to have you here.
It's great to be here and looking forward to the conversation.
How did it go this year?
Yep. So it was great this year. The marathon, not only the Los Angeles marathon, but marathons by and large, are huge community events that have a way of bringing communities together. And this year, with the wildfires and everything that has happened here in L.A., I guess I can say the timing of the marathon really couldn't have been better because I think the community was ready to come together and engage in something very positive. And that was felt all along our racecourse. The crowds were bigger than we've ever had before. The number of runners that we had was as big as we've ever had. So by every metric, the race was fantastic this year.
How is the route determined?
Over the years, the routes had a number of evolutions.
Yes.
In its early year, it was a downtown course.
Right.
And then one of the improvements that was made is to change the route to a course that we called Stadium to the Sea. It started at Dodger Stadium and finished in Santa Monica. That course was very well received. The next course change that we made was 2021. The course was changed from Stadium to the Stars, where it now finishes at Avenue of the Stars in Santa Monica Boulevard in Century City. It is a tour of L.A. like no other. There's no stoplights, nothing slowing you down. You go straight from Dodger Stadium out to Century City. We think it has a lot of things that we weren't able to offer in Santa Monica. Our crowd support at the finish line is incredible, way beyond anything that race has ever received in the past. And that's all part of the experience. When you get to the finish line, you want a live, vibrant, exciting finish line because you've accomplished something really great. I mean, keep in mind that only 1% of the population ever runs a marathon.
Really?
So it is a significant accomplishment.
How do you manage the issue of people with altered abilities that make them either in a wheelchair or some other device that they need to be able to do this? What's their event?
Okay, so since 1986, we've run a wheelchair division in the marathon. We were one of the pioneers of wheelchair racing in the country. And so we've had our wheelchair division, which is really, it's a pro race, and there's prize money available. And then we have an exhibition division, which is what we call hand cranks. It's a three-wheeled wheelchair, but the way it's propelled is with your arms, and there's a gear. It's a little bit more like a bicycle.
Right.
There is quite a bit of participation in that division.
If someone wanted to participate in the L.A. Marathon, first of all, I imagine sign up early. But nonetheless, what's the best way?
LAMarathon.com.
Thanks a lot, Murphy.
Thank you.
In this week's Things to Do, it's anchors away for L.A. Fleet Week at the port. Catch some Filipino-American indie music at the library and enjoy a Memorial Day concert with the First Marine Division Band. All this up next on Things to Do.
It's time for Southern California's largest Memorial Day event, and it's free. It's L.A. Fleet Week 2025. Join the Port of Los Angeles for this annual celebration taking place over multiple days at the port and L.A.'s waterfront. Events include active-duty ship tours, live entertainment, aircraft flyovers, military displays, and friendly competitions like the Galley Wars culinary cook-off. This year is the 250th anniversary of the Army, Marine Corps, Merchant Marines, and the Navy. Celebrations will be taking place over the extended Memorial Day weekend with lots of fun for the family. Head to the Port of Los Angeles for free L.A. Fleet Week events taking place from Friday, May 23rd, through Memorial Day, Monday, May 26th. For the full schedule of events, check out lafleetweek.com. Join the Los Angeles Public Library to celebrate Asian-American Pacific Islander Heritage Month at the Puyol Pico Branch on Saturday, May 24th. Zazamo Quibelin is behind the Zazamo name. Quibelin is a singer-songwriter who also gives his name to the band he performs with. Together, they play Filipino-American indie pop-rock, and they are the first Filipino-American band to appear on NPR's Music 2025 Tiny Desk Contest. Enjoy a unique musical performance in Tagalog at the Puyol Pico Library Branch on Saturday, May 24th at 3:00 p.m. For more information, visit lpl.org/events. As part of L.A. Fleet Week, Councilwoman Monica Rodriguez invites everyone to enjoy a Memorial Day concert in the park on Sunday, May 25th. The concert will feature the First Marine Division Band, which is the regional military band of the U.S. Marine Corps at Camp Pendleton. Other live entertainment will also take place, and there will be a Veterans Resource Fair on site. Head to Bryant Park in Mission Hills to hear this Memorial Day concert in the park taking place on Sunday, May 25th at 11:00 a.m. For more information, visit cd7.lacity.gov/events. And that's a look at some things to do.
And that's all for this week. I'm Natalia Bilbao, and from all of us here at L.A. this week, thank you so much for joining us. Remember that you can watch us online anytime at lacityview.org, and we're also on Instagram, Facebook, X, and YouTube. See you next time for more L.A. this week.
You're arriving at Los Angeles International Airport in beautiful Southern California. One of the first things you will see as you're landing is the ever-iconic LAX theme building. The LAX theme building is a modern icon and recognized worldwide as the space-age landmark of one of the world's youngest and most influential cities. Designed by architectural firm Pierrara & Luck, the building was completed in 1961 and features an observation deck and the Bob Hope USA. The spider-like appearance of the building is a playful and futuristic design illusion created by topping four steel reinforced concrete legs with stucco. The building received cultural historic status from the city of Los Angeles for its distinguishing characteristics, which are valuable to the study of that period's style and method of construction. It is also an example of mid-century modern Googie architecture. The LAX theme building serves as the symbolic gateway to Los Angeles, and the futuristic design is intended to convey new prosperity and the embrace of technological innovation. It has been and continues to be a constant reminder of Los Angeles' strive to be the city of tomorrow.
All right, good morning and welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of your Los Angeles City Council. Today is Tuesday, the 20th day of May in the year 2025. Public comment for today's meeting will be taken in person in the John Ferraro City Council chambers. Let's begin our proceedings, Madam Clerk, by calling the roll.
Yes, sir. Bloomingville, Harristassen, Hernandez, Hutt, Hradot, Lee, McCosker, Nazarian, Padilla, Hart, Price, Ramen, Rodriguez, Soto Martinez, Jaroslawski, 13 members present and inform Mr. President.
All right, first order of business?
Approval of May 16, 2025 minutes?
All right, Councilmember Rodriguez moves. Councilmember Hradot seconds. What's next?
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Councilmember Padilla moves. Councilmember Price seconds. What's next?
Mr. President, today's Tuesday. It's time for the flag salute.
All right, I'll ask everyone in the chambers to rise and join Councilmember Hutt in the pledge of allegiance.
Good morning. Put your right hand over your heart. Let's begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Madam Clerk, let's go through our agenda for today.
Yes, sir. Would council like to send all items from today's meeting forthwith, sir?
Without objection, that'll be the order.
Mr. President, there is a request to continue item 26 to May 27, 2025, sir.
Without objection.
Items 1 through 10 are items noted for public hearing. Items 11 through 35 are items which public hearings have been held. Item 36 through 43 are items which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration, sir.
Without objection, those items are now before us. Specials members, specials to my right on the east side of the building, Councilmember Rodriguez.
Yes, I'd like to request item 36 and 43 for questions.
36 and 43 for questions. Councilmember Ramen.
I have amendments for items 33 and 36, which will be circulated in a moment.
Sure, all right, that one's being held on the desk.
And item 40 for a separate vote.
4-0. All right, Councilmember Soto Martinez, morning.
President, I'd like to call item number 27 for a separate vote, please.
All right, Councilmember Price?
Thank you, Mr. President. Item 5, I'd like to call for an amendment.
All right.
And that's being circulated.
Minimum is being circulated.
And out of an abundance of caution, I'm recusing myself from items 14, 36, and 38 because my wife's employer has worked with an applicant on the item.
Right on. All right, any other specials on this side? All right, let's go to this side. Councilmember Hradot.
Thank you, Council President. I'm calling item 40 special for a separate vote.
All right, Councilmember McCosker? All right, any others on the west side? Councilmember Jaroslawski?
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to continue item 3 for four weeks and continue item 40 for two weeks.
Okay, we have dates on that, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir.
Sorry, 40 for two weeks and 3 for four weeks.
Okay, so for item 3, four weeks would be June 18, 2025, and item number 42, weeks would be June 3, 2025.
All right, without objection. Any other specials? All right, Madam Clerk, what items are available for our consideration at this time?
Mr. President, the items that council may vote on now are items 11 through 13, 15 through 25, 27 through 32, 34, 35, 37, 30... Let me go through that again. Items that council may now vote on would be 11 through 13, 15 through 25, 28 through 32, 34, 35, 37, 39, 41, and 42, sir. Oh, I'm sorry, no, no, no.
One more time, one more time from the top.
Yeah, one more time. Okay, not those. 11 through 13, 15 through 25, and 28 through 32 and 34, sir.
All right, those items are now before us. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
14 ayes.
All right, what's next? Councilmember Ramen?
Item 34, go forthwith, please.
Without objection, item 34 going forthwith. I think all items are forthwith for today's agenda.
All items are going forthwith.
Right on. So just members, all items on today's agenda are forthwith. Madam Clerk, what's next?
Next would be item 27, that was called special, for a separate vote, sir.
All right, any comments on 27? Seeing no one on the board, let's open the roll on item 27, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes, 3 noes.
All right, what's next?
Next would be item 35, sir.
All right, 35, call special for... All right, we have item number 35 before us. Any comments on 35? All right, let's open the roll on item number 35, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14.
All right, what's next?
Next would be public comment, sir.
All right, I'll ask the city attorney and the clerk to prepare the room for public comment. Okay. To people providing public comment, when it is your turn to speak, please state which of the agenda items you'd like to speak to. You will have one minute per item, up to three minutes total for the items open for public comment. When speaking on the agenda items, you must be on topic. Our goal is to get through as many speakers as we can. If you are not on topic, or if we cannot tell whether you are on topic, you will get one brief warning from me or the council president. At that point, you need to get immediately and clearly on topic. If you do not do so, or if you again stray off topic, you will forfeit the rest of your speaking time, and we will move on to the next speaker. The items open for public comment on the agenda are items 1 and 2, items 4 through 10, items 36 through 39, and items 41 through 43. So again, let me repeat. The items open for public comment on the agenda are items 1 and 2, items 4 through 10, items 36 through 39, and items 41 through 43. Item number 3 and item number 40 have both been continued. Members of the public may also speak for up to one minute for general public comment. During general public comment, members of the public may speak to any of the items or anything else in the city's subject matter jurisdiction. Of a couple more announcements, if I could have the interpreters make this first one aloud to the room, please. If you require a Spanish-language interpreter, please make sure to pause every few sentences so that the interpreters can interpret. Don't worry, we will hold your time while the interpreters are interpreting, so you will get the same amount of time as everyone else. Finally, in order to help us run an efficient public comment period and fit in as many speakers as possible, we would ask that you please wait until you hear your name called aloud on the speakers before lining up to speak. The names are called at random, so again, please wait until you hear your name read aloud, and then you can line up in any order on your left-hand side of the council chambers. Thank you.
I will not call names to come up and speak.
You could read some additional names as well. Which items would you like to speak to?
I'll take all items and general public comment. Thank you, Groot.
Okay, so you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general. Go ahead.
For the record, my alias that was called was Yancy Lace, so if you see Stacy Segarra Bollinger, don't bother. I'll begin with the item regarding a 4118 expansion. It's really frustrating how 4118 has just become a habit of this body. Councilmember from District 4, Ramen, once said that she vehemently opposed 4118, but then in a recent board meeting, her field deputy said that she wants to make sure 4118 is being enforced in her district when constituents asked about an encampment on Fulton and the 101. But criminalizing homelessness, it just makes unhoused residents criminals. It doesn't solve the problem, it just moves encampments from one place to another. Speaking of which, we have a motion regarding funding for the Inside Safe program. $35,494,594.03 to be shuffled around for providing leases, contracts for services. The purported goal of Inside Safe is a mobile one. People shouldn't live outside, we should get these people indoors, but we've seen this program is extremely costly and ineffective. We could be using the money for Inside Safe and just handing it to unhoused residents to go get their homes, and it would be spent more efficiently, especially considering that LASSA is in this motion, and we've seen that LASSA does a really lousy job tracking where funding goes, and there's been a lot of corruption in that body with contracts being issued to parties with conflicts of interest, and just a lack of oversight as far as where the funding goes, and money being spent on an open bar for a holiday party for LASSA employees. So this is, again, a noble cause, but lousy administration. Item 38 is for affordable housing. Again, a noble cause, but many "affordable" housing projects in the city require an income of up to 120% AMI, which is around $100,000 a year. I am on an affordable housing registry, I get alerts. Recently, I got one that required a 700 FICO score to move in. If you have a 700 FICO score and you make $100,000 a year, you can afford market-rate housing. These are taxpayer-subsidized buildings, and when we issue these revenue bonds, they go to private developers and landlords. We could be issuing mortgage revenue bonds and just give them to the people who need it to then own their homes. Homeowners are a lot less likely to become unhoused than renters, but what these affordable housing projects do is funnel more money into the hands of developers and landlords, have limited covenants, and eventually those units become market-rate. And then what happens to the residents who live there, huh, Hugo? I believe the children are our future, and they deserve to be safe and secure when they're walking to and from their school. It's an unwritten rule that the children should be our top priority with regard to resources in the city. But the budget the mayor proposed, along with ADOT memo, threatened the jobs of crossing guards by replacing us with traffic sergeants due to overtime on their salary. This will cost the city more money, so now the council needs to save the jobs this budget puts at risk. Saving the crossing guard program could also save our kids. Save the crossing guards. Thank you for funding us, and shout out Smoke and Scan.
I'd like to call up more names. Nikki Noem, Tomasa, Miki T., Juan Luna, Justin Kuran.
Okay, before the next speaker comes up and before we start his time, I just want to make an announcement aloud to the room. So if this is your first time here, or even if it's not your first time here, just FYI, I believe we are highly likely to hear some very offensive things over the next couple minutes with this next speaker. The Brown Act does not require you, the members of the audience, to listen, so it's up to you. If you would like, you're more than welcome to go for a quick walk and look at the rotunda. You're also welcome to pop in your headphones, you can even stick your fingers in your ears if you would prefer to do that. I just want to let you know that it may be very offensive, it does not reflect the views of the city or this council as a body or individually. We appreciate your patience. The fastest way to get through this is just to let them go, and then we will continue with public comment after that. Good morning. You have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Go ahead.
Thank you for the prior restraint, asshole. As far as all your building and safety reports, fuck you, Jonathan Groot, you racist communist pig. Now look at here on item 36, homelessness emergency. What do you call an emergency when you got breaking news that the U.S. Attorney Bill E.S.S.A.Y.L.I. announces formation...
You could read some additional names as well. Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
I'll take all items and general public comment. Thank you, Groot.
So you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general. Go ahead.
For the record, my alias, um, that was called was Yancy Lace, so if you see Stacy Segarra-Bollinger, don't bother. Um, I'll begin with the item regarding a forty-one eighteen expansion. Uh, it's really frustrating how forty-one eighteen has just become a, a habit of this body. Councilmember from District Four, Ramon, once said that she vehemently opposed forty-one eighteen, but then, in a recent board meeting, her field deputy said that she wants to make sure forty-one eighteen is being enforced in her district when, um, constituents asked about an encampment on Fulton and the 101. Um, but criminalizing homelessness, it just makes unhoused residents criminals. It doesn't solve the problem. It just moves encampments from one place to another. Um, speaking of which, we have a motion regarding funding for the Inside Safe program. Thirty-five million, four hundred and ninety-four thousand, five hundred and ninety-four dollars and three cents to be shuffled around for, um, providing, uh, leases, contracts for services. The, the purported goal of Inside Safe is a mobile one. People shouldn't live outside. We should get these people indoors. But we've seen this program is extremely costly and ineffective. We could be using the money for Inside Safe and just handing it to unhoused residents to go get their homes, and it would be spent more efficiently. Especially considering, um, that LSA is in this motion, and we've seen that LSA does a really lousy job tracking where funding goes. And there's been a lot of corruption in that body with contracts being issued, um, to parties with conflicts of interest, and just a lack of oversight as far as where the funding goes, and money being spent on an open bar for a holiday party for LSA employees. Um, so this is, again, a noble cause, but, um, lousy administration. Item thirty-eight is for affordable housing. Again, a noble cause, but many quote-unquote "affordable" housing projects in the city require an income of up to twenty percent, a hundred and twenty percent AMI, which is around a hundred and thousand, a hundred thousand dollars a year. Um, I am on an affordable housing registry. I get alerts. Recently, I got one that required a seven-hundred FICO score, um, to move in. If you have a seven-hundred FICO score and you make a hundred K a year, you can afford market-rate housing. These are taxpayer-subsidized buildings. And when we issue these revenue bonds, they go to private developers and landlords. We could be issuing mortgage revenue bonds and just give them to the people who need it to then own their homes. Homeowners are a lot less likely to become unhoused than renters. But what these affordable housing projects do is funnel more money into the hands of developers and landlords, have limited covenants, and eventually those units become market rate. And then what happens to the residents who live there, huh, Hugo?
General public comment.
I believe the children are our future, and they deserve to be safe and secure. When they're walking to and from their school, it's an unwritten rule that the children should be our top priority with regard to resources in the city. But the budget the mayor proposed, along with A D O T memo, threatened the jobs of crossing guards by replacing us with traffic sergeants due to overtime on their salary. This will cost the city more money. So now the council needs to save the jobs this budget puts at risk. Saving the crossing guard program could also save our kids. Save the crossing guards. Thank you for funding us, and shout out Smoke and Scan.
I'd like to call up more names. Nikki Noem, Tomasa, Miki T., Juan Luna, Justin Kuran.
Okay, before the next speaker comes up and before we start his time, I just want to make an announcement aloud to the room. Uh, so if this is your first time here, um, or even if it's not your first time here, um, just FYI, I believe we are highly likely to hear some very offensive things over the next couple minutes with this next speaker. Uh, the Brown Act does not require you, the members of the audience, to listen, um, so it's up to you. If you would like, you're more than welcome to go for a quick walk, um, and look at the rotunda. Uh, you're also welcome to pop in your headphones. Uh, you can even stick your fingers in your ears if you would prefer to do that. I just want to let you know that it may be very offensive. It does not reflect the views of the city or this council as a body or individually. We appreciate your patience. The fastest way to get through this is just to let 'em go, and then we will, um, continue with public comment after that. Good morning. You have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Go ahead.
Thank you for the prior restraint, asshole. As far as all your building and safety reports, fuck you, Jonathan Groot, you racist communist pig. Now look at here on item thirty-six, homelessness emergency. What do you call an emergency when you got breaking news that the U.S. Attorney Bill E.S.S.A.Y.L.I. announces formation about homeless fraud and corruption task force against the city of Los Angeles, for the record? That's what these documents here in my hands are about, because when I attended the courthouse called a federal courthouse, Jonathan, where was your mayor? Where was your fucking mayor on May fifteenth at the federal courts? Where was she? And the issue there was about homelessness? Where the fuck was the mayor when Catherine Barger and David O. Carter put his foot down your mouth saying, "Where's the fucking mayor? Get your fat, stupid ass, dumbass, shiny ass, and report for business of the people." Then I go into the item of L.A. Alliance for Human Rights. David O. Carter, David O. Carter, David O. Carter. And the reason to retain an attorney, the city of Los Angeles is gonna spend a million dollars of taxpayers' money for the fraud-corruption task force against Los Angeles and Los Angeles County on homelessness. And I still support Measure sixty-four and every motherfucker here to talk about, "We want our permits for marijuana 'cause we have a right to, to invest and prosper." Fuck you, L.A. Then, on the other highlights of this corrupted fucking city of Los Angeles, item thirty-eight, housing revenue bonds. Fuck your bonds, Mayor, and fuck you, Los Angeles, and fuck the DA for the reason, Smoke and Scan, you're right. Smoke and Scan, it's all about corruption, and again, shine, shine, shine. Your fucking mayor doesn't want to give permits to businesses wanting to sell Measure sixty-four voted by the voters marijuana. Fuck you.
So that's not on the agenda.
I know, I added it, asshole. Now I'm going on to topic.
Right, you have one minute. General public comment.
Now into my general public comment, dickface. Questions loom over Trump's order to create housing for six thousand homeless vets. For years, I've been talking about vets. For years, I've been telling you fucking people of Los Angeles, you fucking Angelenos, and you fucking corrupted criminals of Los Angeles, and you, Jonathan Groot, just remember, you participated personally and involved with L.A. attorneys to defraud the system under Trump, under Doge, because you created the crisis of homelessness, for the record. I believe you created the problem, Mr. Attorney Jonathan Groot, for all the times you ousted me out of public meetings when you illegally used impermissible restraint of my prior First Amendment speech. Forty-two U.S.C., nineteen eighty-three, America, fuck Los Angeles.
For the record, sir. For the record, sir.
Next speaker?
Sir?
So if you have documents to provide to this body, then you can provide it to the sergeant who's standing directly behind you. We need to move on to the next speaker. Mr. Herman, I'm going to ask you politely, please vacate the podium. I'm not warning you yet. Please vacate the podium so we can continue with public comment. I would also note that you did manage to barely follow the rules today, and if you notice, you were given your full amount of time. Good morning, Speaker. Which items would you like to speak to?
Buenos dias. Mi nombre es Margarita Gonzalez, y vivo en el Distrito Nueve. Estoy hablando sobre el comentario.
Yes, good afternoon. My name is Margarita Gonzalez. I live in District Nine, and I am here to...
Uh, vivo en el Distrito Nueve. Estoy hablando del comentario público. Necesito traducción.
Comment, okay, so you have one minute. Go ahead.
Un minuto adelante.
Go ahead.
Quiero que nuestra concejal, Nitya, introduzca la nueva fórmula de control de renta que es el cero al tres por ciento.
I want Councilwoman Nitya to introduce a new formula for rent control from zero to three percent.
Es urgente que usted, concejal Nitya, recuerde que los miembros de ACE tocamos puertas por usted.
And it's urgent for you to remember, Councilwoman Nitya Ramon, that the members of ACE went canvassing door-to-door for you.
Para que fuera nuestra, nuestra campeona de los derechos de inquilinos.
To be our champion of renters' rights.
Mi historia es sobre el desalojo. Yo vivo en mi, en mi propiedad, donde vivo ahorita por veintiocho años.
My story is about eviction or being without a house. I have lived in the property where I am for twenty-eight years.
Mi esposo por cuarenta y nueve años que ahí en esa casa fue donde él nació.
My husband has lived in that same house where he was born for forty-nine years.
Y tengo tres hijos, de veinticuatro, de veinte, y el más pequeño de diecisiete con necesidades especiales.
And I have three children, twenty-four, twenty, and the youngest one is seventeen years old with special needs.
Mis tres hijos y mi esposo nacieron en esa propiedad, y los nuevos...
My three kids and my husband were born in that property.
Y los nuevos dueños...
Speaker, your time has expired.
Señora, se le acabó su tiempo.
And if I could have the interpreters make an announcement aloud to the room. So, it's...
I will now call...
If you have additional public comments to make after your time expires, we understand that sometimes the, it seems like the clock is going awfully quickly.
Sí, para las personas hablando español, si ustedes tienen comentarios adicionales, nosotros entendemos que a veces se acaba muy rápido el tiempo.
Before the next speaker speaks, I'd like to call up more names. Luis Asturias, Adam Smith, George Busseri, Giselle Mata, Alejandro Maya.
Okay, and I could have the interpreters continue. Thank you, Speaker, just a second. So if you have additional public comments to make, you can always do so in writing at lacouncilcomment.com.
Si tienen comentarios adicionales, los pueden escribir en el sitio de internet, lacouncil.com.
And if you are looking for that URL, you can either do a quick Google search, or you can find it at the very top of every city council agenda. Thank you.
Y si quieren ese enlace, lo pueden encontrar en Google, o también lo pueden encontrar en su agenda en la parte superior. Gracias.
Good morning, Speaker. Which items would you like to speak to?
Uh, good morning. Uh, these two items that I'm speaking on, they're not up on the board. It's for item twenty-eight and twenty-nine.
Twenty-eight and twenty-nine?
Correct.
Okay, so twenty-eight and twenty-nine are not open for public comment, but you can speak to them during general. So you have one minute for general public comment. Go ahead.
Understood, thank you. My name is Juan Luna. I am a Western State's Regional Council of Carpenters. I work and recreate in the vicinity of the project. The Western State's Regional Council of Carpenters supports this project, these projects. These developers have committed to work with the, with the contractors that will hire locally and utilize apprentices from a state-certified apprenticeship training program. I would like to express my support for these projects as I believe that it will benefit the environment and the local economy by practicing protocols that will protect worker health and safety and incorporate adequate environmental mitigation. Thank you.
Good morning, Speaker. Which items would you like to speak to?
Uh, public comment.
Okay, so you have one minute. Go ahead.
Hello, my name is Justin. I'm a resident of C.D. fourteen, uh, currently in the downtown, living in downtown area. Uh, I'm here to say that the rent is just way too high. The majority of us Angelenos are renters, and the fact is that most of us pay more than half our income on the cost of living rent here in L.A. So I'm here today to plead with you all to please introduce the bill to lower the rent cap down to three percent. The ten percent is way too high for utility, and the extra roommate bump. It is ridiculous that we still have this outdated and, uh, frankly unjust, um, and pro-landlord kind of policy in the city of Los Angeles that is home to majority renters. And so it would really mean a lot for our city council to stand up and actually stand with the working class and renters of Los Angeles to lower the cost of living, the cost of rent, and really just, you know. Thank you.
Next speaker? Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
Uh, comentario público.
Public comment. Okay, so you have one minute. Go ahead.
Un minuto adelante.
Uh, hola, mi nombre es Luis Asturias. Soy miembro del Distrito Diez.
Yes, hello, my name is Luis Asturias. I am a member of District Ten.
Y estoy aquí, estoy hablando sobre comentario público. Necesito traducción.
Sí, adelante. I'm here for public comment. I need translation.
Quiero que nuestra concejal, Cynthia, introduzca la nueva fórmula de control de rentas.
I want our Councilwoman Cynthia to introduce, uh, a new, uh, form for a council motion, formula in a council motion.
Que es del cero al tres por ciento.
From zero to three percent.
Es urgente que usted, concejal Nitya, recuerde que los miembros de ACE...
And it's urgent for you, Councilwoman Nitya, to remember that the members of ACE...
Tocamos puerta para que usted fuera nuestra campeona.
Went door-to-door canvassing for you to be our champion.
De los derechos de los inquilinos.
For renters' rights.
Por favor, no nos defrauden.
Please do not commit this fraud on us.
Y mi historia es que vivo en un distrito donde, un edificio donde mucha gente ha sido desalojada injustamente.
And I live in a building, uh, my personal story, living in this building where many people have been evicted.
Porque la renta es muy alta, es inaccesible.
Because the rent is way too high and it's just inaccessible.
So de nada sirve de que estemos limpiando las calles de los desamparados.
So it doesn't really help out a lot that we're just cleaning the street or ridding the street of homeless people.
Cuando en la puerta de atrás están saliendo personas desalojadas que están desciendo, eh, en las calles.
When we have people in the back representing here, informing you about being evicted and being at risk of being homeless.
Next speaker? Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to? I'm sorry, who, could we, sergeants, could we identify, is that Mr. Herman who's continuing to clap? I'm being told it's Mr. Herman. Mr. Herman, despite being relatively good for the first part of this meeting, uh, you have disrupted the meeting in that I'm trying to continue public comment. So please do not disrupt this meeting anymore. This is your first and only formal warning. If you continue to do so, you'll be subject to removal pursuant to Rule Seven, Rule Twelve. I'm sorry, Speaker. Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
Sobre el control de renta.
I want to speak about rent control.
Okay, so I'm gonna give you one minute for general public comment. Go ahead.
Le voy a dar un minuto para comentario público general. Adelante.
Sí. Buenos dias, mi nombre es Alejandro Maya y vivo en el Distrito Quince, y estoy hablando acerca de ese comentario público. Necesito traducción.
Yes, my name is Alejandro Maya. I live in District Fifteen. I'm going to speak about general public comment. I need a translator. Adelante.
Quiero que nuestra concejal, Nitya, introduzca la nueva fórmula de control de renta de, que es del cero al tres por ciento. Es urgente que usted, concejal Nitya, recuerde que miembros de nuestra organización hacen, tocamos puertas por usted para que fuera nuestra campeona de los derechos de inquilinos.
Yes, and we want the Councilwoman Nitya Ramon to introduce a new formula for rent control from zero to three percent. It is important for you to remember, Councilwoman, that us, the proud members of ACE, went door-to-door canvassing for you to be our champion for rent control.
A mí me están desalojando y pedí que fueran a revisar mi propiedad, y el inspector fue muy prepotente conmigo y con otras personas que me estaban ayudando para traducirle al inspector porque yo no hablo inglés.
And I am facing eviction of my apartment, and I, I had someone go there to, to analyze my, my, my belongings, and there was an inspector there who was being very preposterous with me and the people who were helping me translate, uh, with, for him, because I do not speak English.
Quisiera que nos apoyara, Nitya, por favor, porque están haciendo de todos nosotros, los inquilinos, un abuso.
Uh, we want your support, Nitya Ramon, please, because us, the renters, were just being abused in all sorts of ways.
Muchísimas gracias. Feliz tarde.
Thank you so much. Have a good afternoon.
And if I could have the interpreters just really quick, just let the next, the, the speaker know if he could hang out by the side for just a couple minutes, please. I think he's right there now.
Al comentarista, el comentarista sí, por favor, puede volver, quedarse ahí parado al costado por un, un minuto, por favor.
Thank you. Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
Um, number thirty-six, number forty, and general public comment.
Okay, so you have two minutes for the items and one minute for general. Go ahead.
Great. Uh, my name's Adam from the Los Angeles Community Action Network. Um, number thirty-six is finally here for a vote. Um, and I just think it's absolutely embarrassing that...
I'm sorry, sir. How many items? Or were you, uh, just speaking on thirty-six, sir?
Thirty-six, forty, and general public comment.
Okay, so thirty-six and general public comment. Thank you.
And number forty.
Oh, okay, two minutes. Thank you.
Where should I start? Um... Yeah, I just see all these millions coming through for, for shelter beds. Um, I see that some of them are for congregate shelter beds in Skid Row in Council District Fourteen at the URM Shelter and the Weingart Shelter. And it's just curious that the, the city's dumping millions of dollars into congregate beds for Inside Safe in Skid Row, but that doesn't happen anywhere else in the city. Um, Matt, where'd you get your haircut? Just kidding. Um, so, yes. It, it's very clear that while nobody's listening, as always, that the priority for this council is to meet the obligations in the alliance case and just shove as many people into shitty beds as possible and spend as much money, and you can't even count the fucking beds. It's, it's just really embarrassing. Um, the Weingart is spending money on illegal planter boxes outside of Six and San Pedro, outside of the congregate shelter, being funded by Inside Safe. Is Inside Safe money going to that? I guess I'll switch to number forty. Um, good day, Council President. Number forty, also embarrassing that, uh, Councilmember Yaroslavsky, who asked for a report back on forty-one eighteen that the community had to push to actually get released, is now pushing even more forty-one eighteen zones during budget season when we're thinking about how much money is being dumped into the LAPD for criminalizing homelessness rather than actually addressing the root causes, which of course are housing availability, affordability, and poverty, none of which is solved by Inside Safe, none of which is solved by LAPD funding. And I guess I'll go to general public comment. Um, last Wednesday, there was a sweep scheduled in Council District Fourteen. Paper signs were put up by sanitation on top of metal signs for Operation Healthy Streets. One was for the sweep on Wednesday, the metal signs say Friday, and we were there filming and trying to plead with sanitation because Council, Council District Fourteen wasn't there, but we're trying to plead with sanitation to explain to the people on the street what, what these signs actually mean. They aren't, they are not noticed, and it's so frustrating that when I, people push sanitation to say, "Are you coming to this street next?" People moving their stuff from one street right into the line of fire because they don't, they really don't understand. And all sanitation ECI leads say is "Call three-one-one." It's so fucked up. And speaking of displacement and banishment from the land... And speaking of displacement and banishment from the land, I think it's incumbent on all of us and shameful that none of you in nineteen months of genocide have brought up Palestine.
Next speaker.
Great, thank you. Before the next speaker, Mr. Soto Martinez, uh, is on the queue. For what purpose do you rise? Otech, could you turn on his microphone, please?
Have a technical amendment for item number fourteen. I believe it's been introduced.
It's been circulated?
Uh, not yet, but the clerk, city attorney should have it.
Okay.
Yes, and I believe it's being seconded by Councilmember Padilla.
Yes.
Do you need to read it in the record or? No, okay. All right, back to public comment. Uh, the floor is yours, man. And if you could identify yourself.
Which items would you like to speak to?
Public, uh, public comment.
Okay, and feel free to move the microphone if, if you'd like. So you have one minute for general public comment. Go ahead.
I'd like to speak in regards to the public comment and, uh, in regards to, uh, tenants' rights. Um, yes, hello, my name's Julie Robles and I live in District Fourteen. And I'm here to, uh, uh, I would like to, for our council Nadia, to introduce the new formula of rent control that is zero to three percent. It's urgent for Council Nadia to remember that the members of ACE knock doors and for her to become a champion of the rights of tenants. And my story is that I'm a small landlord in District Fourteen and I'm organizing a small group of also landlords in District Fourteen and we, that we all feel the same way that, uh, zero to three percent is more than enough, especially in these hard times. And, um, I would really, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Welcome.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
General comment.
So you have one minute. Go ahead.
Okay, good morning, Council. My name is Giselle Mata from ACE. Los Angeles faces enormous challenges. Wildfires, soaring housing costs, and crumbling infrastructure that cost our city billions each year. Right now, we pay one point four billion in fees and interest and debt services annually to Wall Street banks. Imagine if that money stayed here, rebuilding neighborhoods, creating affordable homes, and supporting local businesses. Our deficit right now in L.A. is close to a billion dollars. It's basically what we're paying to banks. It costs four hundred and sixty thousand to get this study started. The only solution that you all are offering is job cuts. Cuts to our neighborhood services. That's the last thing we need right now. North Dakota's century-old public bank model has returned over a billion in its general fund while investing in additional one billion in education. Nitya Raman, remember who got you where you are and remember the people that elected you. Thank you.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
Thirty-eight, forty, forty-three, public comment.
So you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general. Go ahead.
On thirty-eight, you got bonds for twenty-eight point one million, another twenty point one million dollars. And again, you're not putting down how you're paying for them. Another illegal game in your foolish trip. Uh, number forty, what is this where you're trying to tell people who have no place to live? You can't sit, you can't lie, you can't store, you can't sleep. What kind of inhumane sociopaths are all of you? Well, you robbed the homeless money. I know you're sitting there just trying to ignore this all, but the DOJ and a federal court are gonna make it so that you cannot ignore this anymore. And you, Mr. City Attorney, you got a good chance of going to jail. I know why that you have to pay nine hundred thousand dollars. Because you're a defendant and you can't prosecute at the same time. As in federal court. Bass didn't show up and the president of this board didn't show up because you're trying to manipulate getting rid of Judge Carter. Only he isn't going for your foolish business. Now to public comment.
Okay, so you have one minute.
No, I got one thirty. I think you don't know what the hell you're doing, bud.
You said that you would like, can you hold his time for a second? You said now on to public comment, so that tells me you want to move to general. You do not get to use your additional time.
You're eating up my time right now.
Your, your, your time is paused, actually, if you look at the clock. So you have one minute for general public comment per your request. Go ahead. Can you start his time over at one? Thank you.
You people here that are here for lowering your rent, go take a look at another agenda item where we finally force these fools to talk about paying the proper price for housing, which is fifteen thousand five sixty, instead of six to eight hundred thousand dollars. If you divide fifteen five sixty into six hundred thousand, that's thirty-four and a half to one. At eight hundred thousand, it's fifty-four to one. So if you want your housing costs lower, you're gonna have to hammer these people to start paying the right amount of housing because of their contracts with the developers automatically mean that you're gonna be paying more money and your leadership isn't telling you because they don't know the money, because they don't care, or they're bought and sold by somebody. Do you got that, people? This is how money is robbed by the city attorney.
Speaker, your time has expired. Next speaker.
And you're going down, bud.
So if the previous speaker, we are trying to move on to the next speaker. So this is your own, first and only formal warning. Do not disrupt this meeting. I, I believe the speaker's name is George. So George, please do not disrupt this meeting. This is your first and only formal warning. Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
Buenos días, ¿sobre cuáles temas quiere comentar?
Hola, mi nombre es Amelia López. Vivo en el Distrito Siete. Estoy hablando del comentario público. Necesito traducción.
Yeah. Comment, uh, public comment. My name is Amelia Lopez from District Seven.
So you have one minute. Go ahead.
Un minuto adelante. Adelante, señora.
Quiero que nuestra concejal Nitya introduzca la nueva fórmula de control de renta que es del cero al tres por ciento. Es urgente que usted concejal Nitya recuerde que los miembros de ACE tocamos puertas por usted para que nuestra campeona de derechos de los inquilinos.
Yes, uh, we want Council Nitya Raman, Councilwoman Nitya Raman to introduce a new rent control formula from the number zero to three percent. It is important for you to remember, Councilwoman, that us, the members of ACE, went canvassing door-to-door for you to be our champion for the rent control.
Mi nombre es Amelia López. Mi historia es la siguiente. Pertenezco al Distrito Siete de Mónica Rodríguez. Entré vivir a la ciudad de Silma, California, con el concejal Mónica Rodríguez. El día doce de diciembre de dos mil veintitrés y después de un año de cinco meses, el dueño quería que yo firmara un contrato diferente, el primero, donde yo firmaba...
Yes, un, un minuto, señora. So yes, my personal anecdote is as follows. Living in District Seven under Councilwoman Monica Rodríguez in Silmar, California. And on December twelfth of two thousand and three, I had an incident with a landlord claiming that the, the forms that I, or the contract that I had signed was, was different from what I had believed after living there for over a year and five months.
El primero donde yo firmaba que yo cuidaba a su esposa con la enfermedad de Alzheimer por dos semanas.
First, where I signed that I was to take care of his wife, who had Alzheimer's for two weeks.
Para que él tuviera más beneficios ayuda del Medicare y Medicare.
So that he could have more benefits and help from Medic, from Medicare.
Y como no le permite, me dio una notificación.
And because I didn't sign, he gave me a notice. Señora, se le acabó su tiempo.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
Buenos días. Uh, quiero hablar sobre comentario público.
Public comment.
Okay, so you have one minute. Go ahead.
Mi nombre es Sofía Mendoza. Vivo en el Distrito Nueve. Soy miembro de ACE.
Yes, hello, my name is Sofía Mendoza. I live in District Nine. I am a member of ACE.
Quiero que nuestra concejal Nitya Rama...
We want the Councilwoman Nitya Raman...
Introduzca la nueva fórmula de control de renta del cero al tres por ciento.
We want her to introduce a new formula for rent control from zero to three percent.
Es urgente porque ya tenemos mucho tiempo, ¿verdad? Y esto ya tiene que ser ya.
It's urgent because we've been at this for a long time, right? So we need this right now.
Uh, recuerde que los miembros de ACE tocamos puerta por usted para que fuera nuestra campeona.
And remember that the members of ACE went door-to-door canvassing for you so that you could be our champion.
Sí, yo como, como inquilino tengo, uh, dificultad como con el dueño porque él quiere aumentarme más la renta. Por eso les pido que es importante, esto no nada más a Nitya Rama, a todos los concejales.
And me, as a renter, I'm having difficulty paying my rent because my landlord is trying to raise the rent. So that's why I'm asking you, not just you, Nitya Raman, but all of the council.
Mi esposo tiene dos trabajos y si llega el aumento de renta del diez por ciento, el ocho por ciento, nos vamos a quedar prácticamente en la calle.
My husband has two jobs. And if we are to, if we are facing paying a ten or eight percent increase in rent, we're at risk of practically being on the street.
Por eso es importante que ya pongan, uh, esto ya en el concilio. Por favor. Gracias.
And that's why it's important to put this in the council now. Please. Thank you.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Heloísa Galindo. Voy a hacer comentario público.
Okay, so you have one minute. Go ahead.
Un minuto adelante.
Antes que nada, quiero decirles a todos los concejales que es una falta de respeto que los inquilinos vengan y les digan lo que están pasando con sus rentas porque no tienen un tope de renta y ustedes están platicando sin ponerles atención.
Yes, uh, un segundo, un segundo, señora, para que le pueda traducir. Yes, hello, my name is Heloísa Galindo. Before I would like to speak, I would like to say that it is a complete lack of respect from the council members that while us, the renters, are coming here to speak to you about our rent control needs and our difficulties that we have and for all of you to be standing there just talking with one another.
Desde la vez pasada que vine y hablé, por ahí vi sonrisas. No es ningún juego, hombres. Pónganse a trabajar.
Yes, since the last time I came here, it was the same thing, seeing all smiles everywhere. This isn't a game. This isn't a joke. This is real.
Nitya Ramos, te pedimos, vamos, Nitya Ramos. Nosotros estuvimos apoyando, eres parte del pueblo. Vamos, Nitya Ramos. Pon tajo en la mesa. Cero por ciento, mínimo tres por ciento máximo.
Come on, Nitya Raman, come on, seriously. We need you, we need you, Nitya Raman. We need this new formula. Zero percent minimum with a three percent cap, please.
Vamos, agarren la pala y pónganse a trabajar por los inquilinos. Isabel Jurado, estoy con Julie, la pequeña que dueña de casas.
And yes, come on, put, pick up the shovel and start working, council members. I'm with, I'm with Julie, the small representative here, the worker from, domestic worker.
Pedimos a Steve que le dé una cita a Julie. Vamos, pónganse a trabajar por los inquilinos.
Okay, Speaker, your time has expired.
Come on, Councilwoman Jurado, we are asking for, for your help too. We want to schedule a meeting with Julie, please.
And I believe we called out audit L.A. as well. So I believe, Speaker, do you have the mic yet or no? Just one second. If we could get the speaker in the center aisle, the remote micro, or the wireless microphone, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
But thank you, Mr. Groth, for not forgetting about me. Um, let's go with all items and then you tell me when I'm off topic because I didn't study it as well as I should have, and then public comment.
Okay, so you said all items, and then just for clarification, the items that are open for public comment are items one, one and two, items four through ten, items thirty-six through thirty-nine, and items forty-one through forty-three.
Does that include the police one? Or I could just go for it, like, and you could just...
So it, the police pensions is not. That's item twenty-six. It was actually continued. So you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you, sir. We'll go for it. Shout out to Smoke and Scan. Okay, well, I want to start off first. It's like, okay, let's see who's listening. Ms. Hernandez, where are you? Mr. President, come on. Come on, guys, Ms. Padilla. Everyone start listening to the public. We're here to talk to you. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Monica. Um, and Mr. CIO, I feel like that he always has to look like he's about to be tossed under the bus because I think that you guys, you know, come on, you guys are harsh on him. You're giving him like not a lot to work with. And then he's here sweating every time I'm here, so give him a break. I always say hi to him. He says hi back, so he's been cool, but go easy on him, okay? A little bit. I mean, you try. But I'm telling you guys, Mr. McCosker's not listening. Oh, Mr. McCosker, come on, you're letting me down. Like, and even this, well, I'm glad the city attorney's not listening because then he'll be calling me off topic, so. Um, you know, but let's, you know, like, with all the, you know, I see the closed, all the lawsuits, you know, yeah, a lot of lawsuits are coming. Mr. Hugo's not listening, even though I'm always here about his division, right, his area. Shouldn't he be listening, Ms. Monica? You know, right? He should be listening, but he's not. I don't like it when he doesn't listen. Who else isn't listening? Mr. President's not listening. Are you, you're listening. I know you are, because every time I try to catch Ms. Hernandez is not listening, she swears she is. And so I always, I try to catch her. I've yet to catch her not listening, even when she's talking. Are you listening, Ms. Hernandez? Okay, all right, I got you this time. All right, I'm just gonna keep doing it until everyone's listening, because, Mr. Lee, are you listening? Mr. Lee, calling Mr. Lee.
So, Speaker, this is not on the agenda. I'm gonna ask you to stick to the agenda items.
I thought your names are all on the agendas. I see your names all over the agenda.
So I, I appreciate what you're trying to do, but please continue with your agenda public comment. Go ahead.
Okay, okay, um, well, I'm here, I'll wait till what I came here for, to public comment. But in the meantime, like, all those houses that you're giving away, like, the one and two, you know, there's a lot of addresses that you're giving away. Hi, Mr. Price, I hope you're listening. But anyway, um, I think that you should give them to the people who need them. Like, there's a lot of people that would benefit from getting free houses. You know, one and two, like, you're taking the thing off the rolls or whatever. Instead of just taking things off the rolls, give those houses to people who need it. I'll be happy to take one. I bet Smoke and Scan would love to have one. We all would, you know? Like, it would help with the house, right, Ms. Monica? It would help a lot. And, um, hmm. And then the one, I really wanted to talk about the police one because I think that, you know, I don't know. They're doing, I didn't like what's going on over at the police, uh, meeting today. And, boy, it's really hard to concentrate when no one's listening. But you're always listening, Mr. Groth, so in a way that's bad because I wish you wouldn't, because then you wouldn't call me off topic. You see how that works? So I wish you weren't listening and I wish they were. Bob, are you listening? Wave hi if you're listening.
I was not.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Or you're welcome to go to general.
Okay, um, well, we'll just let the clock, I, I just need to, I just need Bob to show signs of life, like, really.
Okay, so I've asked you to move to general public comment.
Okay, here, now, public comment.
You want to talk, go ahead.
Thank you, sir. Okay, I'm here to talk to Mr. Hugo about his area, and also all of you, okay? I don't know if you're aware, there's a lawsuit in the city of Los Angeles. Okay, it's Jane Doe versus, um, oh my god, Gavin Potter. She was a scientist, they're both Scientologists, and she was, she claims that she was sexually assaulted by him as a minor and that she was forced by Scientology to marry her abuser. So, because they don't believe in going to the police. And there's a lot of Jane Doe cases, even against, um, Danny Masterson. They're not allowed to go to the police, okay? So there's a lot of nonsense. There's a lot of victims, women victims, children victims. Because, do you know that in the state of California, that you don't have to be any legal age to get married? Are you listening? Because you're a woman, you guys, all the women here, you're allowed to have children, brides. Okay, come on, CD four. You're not lis, are you listening? Signs of life. Okay, that's all. Bobby, you listening? This is my time, so I could ask you if you're listening. Okay, come on, CD four, you're not lis, are you listening? Signs of life, okay, that's all you, Bobby, you listening? This is my time, so I could ask you if you're listening.
Okay, okay, I was not listening for the record. Where are we next? Was that the last speaker? Yes?
Yes, that was the last speaker.
Okay, I'm told that we, public comment is now closed? We have a certain amount of time, folks, we don't, we don't have unlimited time on this. Okay, anybody who's yelling out will be removed, simple as that. Don't yell out or get removed, that's your warning. What do we have in front of us now? We're waiting for more amendments? Okay, well then, then we'll reopen public comment. Okay. Good reprieve on the public comment, we've just been told we're waiting for a few amendments, so with that, we'll get ten more minutes of public comment. So if your name has been called, why don't we have the next speaker? If you could, if you could read the names, we have...
So I'll call up more names.
Okay.
Margarita Gonzalez, Aida Rivera, Kirsten Peterson, Jared Kilo.
Okay. If you heard your name called, please come forward. Again, we have, we have a limited amount of time, fortunately we have a bit of a delay so we can get a few more speakers in, we appreciate that.
So again, to clarify for everyone, the items that are open for public comment are items one and two, items four through 10, items thirty-six through thirty-nine, and items forty-one through forty-three. Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
Good morning. Mark me down for general public comment and agenda items, I would like to do one, two, and then four, two, seven.
Okay, so you have three minutes for the items on the agenda and one minute for general. Please begin with the items, go ahead.
We're taking a look at item number one, and it's talking about the non-compliance of LAMC code and whether or not there is any sort of inspection costs and whether there will be any sort of consequences and penalties followed up. I talked to the disability commission and I know for a fact, as part of the advocacy that I and many others have done to hold the city accountable, they demand a letter directly from the city attorney herself, Heidi Feltsin Soto, on an annual report, whether there was any sort of selective prosecution of fines on LAMC violations. Now, the office has been formally noticed as such, and we are looking forward to that report. Is it the case, is it the case, that maybe there are some agencies, maybe there are some entities that are not being held to the same standard, not being issued the same fines? Similarly, for number two, we have yet another appeal for LAMC violations and compliance to code. Is there any potential, possibility that there's a discrepancy between who gets prosecuted on LAMC code violations? I know quite a bit because I actually had to learn it when I was criminally prosecuted and beat a case against Heidi Feltsin Soto. It's why I call myself a Heidi Feltsin Soto superfan. I am her number one fan, and we know for a fact that she is in fact not prosecuting everybody equally on the LAMC violations. Otherwise, the city would have collected on the money for an entity such as a church, we'll say, that exists on El Run Huber Way that may or may not be called Scientology, that owes the city quite a big chunk of money, close to millions. We're moving on to item number four. Yet again, we have another motion on LAMC code violations, whether fines and/or criminal prosecution will be taking place. Blockading the public right away is one of those, fifty-six oh nine, fifty-six eleven, fifty-six twelve. Why is it then that the city attorney's office keeps not prosecuting entities equally with fines and criminal prosecution as is required under the law? And you're selectively choosing which entities you do and do not want to go after, do and do not want to get money? That is the literal definition of malicious and selective prosecution. The literal definition, literal definition committed by Heidi Feltsin Soto herself as witness for my case very clearly. That's why I call myself a Heidi Feltsin Soto superfan. That's why I love that she selectively prosecutes people.
But I've been listening intently and I do not believe this is related to the LEDBS lien items.
And we can cut straight to public, general public comment.
Okay, so you have one minute, go ahead.
Why is this city council the only committee so far that continues to chop virtual public comment? I submitted a letter to the executive office of the city attorney's office yesterday on this very same thing. There are disabled people that want to make their voice heard but can't because they can't physically show up here. Tell me how that's not a viewpoint suppression or discrimination. Tell me why this room still has the same infrastructure to hold virtual public comment. You don't need any more licenses, you don't need any more video camera equipment. You have all the things necessary here to hold virtual public comment, and you don't. It's the stupidest thing to get the city sued over, it's the dumbest way to violate people's rights. It's the utter most disgusting thing you can do to discriminate against the ADA community. But you do it anyway, and you do it repeatedly, and you're gonna get the city sued over this shit. It's disgusting. Hold virtual public comment again, and we know you're not calling names on the virtual teleprompter. For fuck's sake, it's the stupidest thing to get the city in trouble for.
And before the next speaker begins, just as an FYI, if you do require an accommodation under the ADA, please let either the sergeants know if you are here in person, or you can reach out to the clerk's office remotely to let them know. Thank you. Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
Buenos dias, sobre cuales temas quiere hablar?
Comentario público.
Public comment.
So you have one minute, go ahead.
Un minuto adelante.
Mi nombre es Tomasa Martínez, soy miembro de ACE y vivo en el distrito catorce. Estoy hablando de comentario público, necesito traducción.
Yes, my name is Tomasa Martínez, proud member of ACE, I live in District Fourteen. Adelante.
Quiero que nuestro concejal Nitia introduzca la nueva fórmula de control de renta que es cero al tres por ciento. Es urgente que usted, concejal Nitia, recuerde que los miembros de ACE tocamos puertas por usted para que fuera nuestra campeona de los derechos de inquilinos.
Yes, and we want councilwoman Nitia Raman to introduce a new rent control formula from zero to three percent. It's important for you to remember, councilwoman, that us, the members of ACE, went door-to-door canvassing for you to be our renters' rights champion.
Isabel Jurado, te quedas como la reina de mi pueblo, de mi pueblo, de las fiestas patronales con la corona. Nada más. Necesitamos que hagas valer esa silla donde estás. Y esa corona, necesitamos tu energía para poder defender a los inquilinos de tu distrito y otros distritos.
And Isabel Jurado, we need you to be the champion, the queen that you are of our, of our people. You need to make, do, need to make good of that position of power that you have in your seat to help us in our districts and other districts as well.
Y apoyar a otros, que estés a favor de Larso, y que defiendas a los inquilinos, ya que están pasando por muchos desalojos y acosos.
And support Larso and other renters, to support renters in facing abuse and evictions.
Que defiendas a tu pueblo porque tenemos la esperanza en ti, porque caminamos por ti, tocamos puertas por ti. Gracias.
And to defend your people because we went canvassing for you, we went supporting you and representing you. Thank you.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
General and ten.
Okay, so you have one minute for item number ten and one minute for general public comment. Please begin with the item, go ahead.
General public comment. Good afternoon, councilmembers, my name is Kika Keith, I've been here plenty of times before, I'm a social equity retail license holder. We're here because we just left the government operations committee meeting where the DCR did not show up to go over their fee schedule. I'm asking you, did you all read the state audit where they were accused of...
Speaker, can you hold her time really quick? So, speaker, you said item number ten.
I'm speaking on general comment right now.
A general public comment, okay, so you have one minute for general public comment. Just for the record, LEDB, item number ten is a building and safety-related item. So you have one minute, if we could start her time at one, you have one minute for general public comment. Go ahead.
Thank you. I would like the budget committee to ask more questions. Why is it that the DCR is charging social equity operators more than general applicants? Why are we paying sixteen hundred and eighty-three dollars to send out a mailing? Why are we paying two thousand five hundred and ninety-six dollars for a viral hearing? Please question them. We demand that you reject the fee schedule, the DCR's fee schedule, and block this outrageous fee study. It's time to dismantle the DCR and immediately adopt the Cannabis Equity Reform and Market Stabilization Grant, uh, Act. Please make sure to look into what the DCR is doing, it has been corrupt. They have disrupted our lives and you guys are not asking the thorough questions. Ask why are they charging the fees. Ask for an audit of the cannabis equity grant. Look at the state audit report. Please, we appeal to you all. Thank you.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
Commentario público.
Public comment.
Okay, and before you begin, please feel free to lower the microphone.
Antes de comenzar, si puede bajar el micrófono un poquito, señora.
Go ahead, you have one minute.
Hola, mi nombre es Aida Rivera, vivo en el distrito nueve. Estoy hablando comentario público.
Yes, my name is Aida Rivera, I live in District Nine for public comment.
Necesito, necesito traducción. Quiero que nuestra concejal Nitia introduzca la nueva fórmula de control de renta que sea del cero al tres por ciento. Es urgente que usted, concejal Nitia, recuerde que los miembros de ACE tocamos puerta por usted pero que fuera nuestra luchona de los derechos de los inquilinos.
Yes, we are urging for councilwoman Nitia Raman to introduce a new rent control formula from zero to three percent. It's urgent for you to remember, councilwoman, that us, the members of ACE, went door-to-door canvassing for you to be our champion of renters' rights.
También le hablo a todos los concejales, no solo a Tintia, a todos los concejales porque nosotros también hemos tocado puertas por algunos de ellos, como el concejal de mi distrito nueve, Colleen Price. Nunca, nunca ha dicho nada, siempre venimos a pedirle que él también nos ayude a que pase la ley Larso, la ley del control de renta.
And we are also talking to all the council members, not just Nitia Raman. We went door-to-door canvassing for other council members, including the one from my district, District Nine, Mr. Curran Price, who has never responded, he's never showing up for anything, he's never done anything to support Larso or other rent control stabilization.
Yo, ahorita en mi lugar donde vivo, me están aumentando el diez por ciento. Soy una madre soltera que vivo con el salario mínimo. Y fíjense ustedes que si pago renta no como, por eso les pido que toquen el corazón y nos ayuden a que pase esa ley, que no nos aumente más la renta. Gracias.
And where I live, I am pacing a ten percent rent increase. Please, I am a single mom, I need to support my kids, and I'm making a minimum wage. With, with the salary that I make, it's not enough to cover my rent, so I am not really even able to afford food. So please, please help us with this rent control.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
General public comment.
Okay, so you have one minute, go ahead.
Hello, city councilmembers. My name is Luis Rivera, I'm a social equity owner and an advocate, and my voice represents hundreds of others here who are not able to be here today or who have already lost their license, life savings, and dreams due to the incompetence of the Los Angeles Cannabis Department. For years, I have faced excessive delays, unclear guidance, and unnecessary financial strain caused by this dysfunctional department. Before the city approves any fee increase, rages any wages, or conducts another lottery, the DCR must fix what is broken. The fee study should have been conducted by an independent third party with input from public license holder, excuse me, particularly those social equity, in the social equity program. The cannabis department needs to be regulated, we need to lower free fees, have a progressive timeline so legal businesses can open stores, employ people, and contribute taxes. We urge you to reject the proposed fee increase until an independent third party is conducting from public input. And the city adopt the Cannabis Equity Market Stabilization motion. Thank you.
Speaker, your time has expired. Next speaker. Good morning, speaker, you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general. Go ahead.
All right, thank you very much, cartel city attorney, start with item number thirty-six. It's about homeless emergency account. I'm really concerned because there's no such thing as homeless emergency account.
Hold on just a second, we're trying to get the timer correct. Okay, go ahead.
Just for the record, you never get the timer correct. The only job for you is to put the timer correct, and then you never do that correctly.
So this is not on the agenda, you know the rules.
Item number thirty-six is about homeless emergency account. And then, how do we deal with homeless emergency account? You have to make sure you put the homeless timer emergency account correctly first, before you talk about homeless emergency account. Now, on television, on a daily basis, that homeless services continue to fail the audit, continue to fail the annual inspection report. Now, you are talking about a homeless emergency account. There's no money in the account. Why? Why is that? Because the money goes to local profit. So-called nonprofit making the largest homeless profit. There's no money because our city attorney put all the money to those illegal, illegal, blumendingo, illegal immigrants, illegal aliens all there, so there's no such thing as homeless emergency account. Now, let's move on to item number thirty-eight. Item number thirty-eight is about multi-family housing bounds. Talking about twenty million, twenty million dollars, and then with only to build sixty-four units. Now, I understand why there's no money for homeless, because you are trying to housing six-four, sixty-four homeless people but with the cost of more than twenty million dollars. Now, I understand why the city attorney is getting like a half a million dollar annual salary right now on the yearly basis. It's because twenty million, you can only house sixty-four people. In the city of LA, there are more than one hundred thousand homeless people. And then, using the same formula, in order to house one hundred thousand, you need several trillions of dollars. That's the reason why you continue to fail. Item number thirty-nine is about the reward for the unsolved murder. I'm not surprised because our city attorney continue to defund the police department to give themselves a bigger race. Now, you have two thousand less LAPD officer on the street, and then you want to solve the murder. You have three hundred less detective on the street, and then city attorney wants to solve the murder. You have a budget crisis with the LAPD, and then our city attorney wants to solve the murder. Now, I understand, we don't need LAPD because LA city attorney continue to ask the public to solve the murder instead of asking the LAPD to do their job to solve the murder. I'm so confused that maybe city attorney, you have to go down the street, find the murder yourself if you continue to defund the LAPD. Going to the general public comment.
General public comment.
Is that I'm concerned about the domestic violence, sexual assault in the city of Los Angeles. Specific about Casey Ventura, because somehow she wanted millions of millions of money. She voluntarily walked into the Sean Diddy's bedroom, she voluntarily, you know, opened her leg and took off her clothes, and then somehow, right now, she is claiming that's sexual assault. That somehow, right now, all of a sudden, she's claiming that's rape. Somehow, right now, she's saying that, you know, he does not have my consent. That's not how it works. You are the one who wanted the money, you are the one who wanted, wanted the fame. You want, you are the one who wanted to have a, to have like your celebrity status in the city of LA. And then, right now, you are saying, that's not, you regret it, that's not how it works. That's why I support Black Lives Matter, that's why I support, we have to make sure free Sean Diddy, he is innocent, Black Lives Matter only.
I'd like to call up more names. Julie Robles, Luis Rivera, June Osborne.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
Item twenty-nine, actually, public comment.
Sorry, I heard a number, but I, and then I heard actually...
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine and public comment, general?
Yeah, public comment.
Okay, so twenty-nine is not open for public comment, but you can speak during general, so you have one minute for general public comment. Yep, go ahead.
Thank you. Greetings, councilmen. My name is Manny Salcedo of the Westeros State's Carpenters. I work and recreate in the community and I'm here in support of the Vital Tower Projects, twenty-nine. We're grateful and honored to team up with a responsible developer like Heinz Development, who shares many of the common goals of the community by hiring safe, responsible contractors and has made a commitment to the community to create jobs and provide much-needed housing. Good jobs, middle-class wages, and good benefits. These are the type of jobs that you could start a career off for an angelino here in this area. And as we know, not everybody goes to college, so a state-accredited apprenticeship program... So a state-accredited apprenticeship program with the carpenters is a learn why you earn situation. This project will benefit many of the protocols for the workers' projects for health and safety and will be incorporated in the environmental mitigations. We ask that you approve this project. Thank you very much, and have a great day.
I'll call up more names. Judith Serlin, Maria Rodriguez, Christopher Martinez, Karen New, Antonio Hernandez, Tina Juárez.
Sí, muy buenas días. Mi nombre es Antonio Hernandez.
Okay, and which items would you like to speak to?
Sobre cuáles temas quiere hablar? Y estoy pidiendo ayuda, más que nada, a la concejal porque el lugar donde yo vivo es una casa y el dueño está aprovechando demasiado.
I'm sorry, did he say which item he wanted to speak to?
Señor, un segundo. ¿Sobre cuál tema quiere hablar? Sobre el abuso de... Okay. Sobre el abuso que hay a nosotros inquilinos.
So, yeah, the general public comment, I believe, Mr. City Attorney.
Okay, so you have one minute. Go ahead.
Comentario público, y necesito traductor. Tiene un minuto. Puede comenzar de vuelta, señor. Okay. Mi nombre es Antonio Hernandez, y vengo porque necesito ayuda.
Yes, my name is Antonio Hernandez. I'm here asking for help.
Porque el lugar donde vivo, el dueño de la vivienda está abusando de todos nosotros inquilinos.
Because where I live, the owner, the landlord, he is abusing of all of us, the renters. He is abusing us.
Y quiero que, por favor, nos atiendan y nos tomen en cuenta de que lo que necesitamos es urgente.
And please, we need you to help us and take into account that what we are asking for is urgent, because all of us.
Como inquilino, estamos padeciendo abuso tanto como los pagos no los han alterado sin darnos aviso.
And because all of us, the renters, are facing abuses, are experiencing abuse, for example, in the rents that we have to pay where they're not even informing us of the changes that they are making.
Quisiera que nuestra concejal...
We ask for our councilperson.
La señora Nitya nos ayudara y viera lo que estamos sufriendo nosotros allá afuera porque de aquí adentro realmente no se ve lo que se sufre allá afuera.
We ask for the councilwoman Nitya to look outside and see what all of us are experiencing and what we are suffering because from inside here, you can't really see what we are dealing with.
A nosotros allá afuera como inquilino nos humillan, que no tenemos derecho, y eso no es verdad. Gracias.
Us outside as renters, we are being humiliated, and we're being humbled telling us that we don't have rights, but that's not true. Thank you.
I'll call up more names. Mauricio Humana, General Dogon, Betsy Ross, Albina Chario, Justin Kuran, Alejandro Maya, Bertha Diaz, Amelia Lopez.
Okay, so if you've heard your name called, please feel free to make your way to the left, your left-hand side of the council chambers. But for the record, I do not see anybody coming up to speak. Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
General public comment.
Okay, so you have one minute.
My name is Mark Gaynor. I'm a member of DSA Los Angeles and SEIU 721, and I'm a resident of District 10. I want to talk about the budget. The city is facing a significant shortfall, and we have an opportunity to begin stabilizing that over the longer term by funding a study for a public bank for Los Angeles. And so I'm calling on all council members to support that in this budget. I also want to note that because there's a significant reduction in homelessness services and rents are continuing to rise, we are going to continue to see more people displaced onto the streets. We have an opportunity to sign me that at the source by capping rent at 3% and 60% of CPI. Thank you.
Okay, so that concludes public comment. And what's next before us?
Mr. President, there is a request to continue item 1 to June 3, 2025, sir.
Without objection, so ordered. Next?
Next, council may now vote on items 2, 6 through 10, 37, 39, 41, and 42, sir.
Okay, those items are before us. Seeing no speakers on the queue for those items, let's open the roll. Close the roll and tally the votes.
14 ayes.
Okay, those measures are agreed, are approved. What's next?
Next would be item number 4, and that was called special for an amendment and motion Harris, Dawson, Hernandez has been submitted and circulated and is before council now.
Okay. So that's before us now. Does anyone wish to speak? Seeing no members on the queue, let's open the roll. Close the roll, tally the votes.
14 ayes.
Okay, that's approved. What's next?
Next would be item number 5, and that was called special for an amendment and motion Price, Soto Martinez, has been submitted and circulated and is before council now, sir.
Okay, that's now in front of us. Any members wish to speak? Seeing no members on the queue, let's open the roll. Close the roll, tally the vote.
14 ayes.
Okay, that's approved. What's next?
Next would be items 14 and 38, and that was called special for Mr. Price for recusal. Please note that 14 has an amendment, and that amendment motion Soto Martinez Padilla has been submitted and circulated. So the vote now would be on the amendment for item 14 and then the vote for 38, sir.
Okay, seeing as Mr. Price is now off the board and out of the room, let's take up those items. Any members wish to speak? Seeing no members on the queue, let's open the roll. Close the roll and tally the vote.
13 ayes.
So that is 13 ayes for item 14, and that was the amendment, and next would be item 38.
Okay, item 38 is before us. Any members wish to speak? Seeing no members on the queue, let's open the roll. Close the roll, tally the vote.
13 ayes.
Okay, that measure is approved. What's next? If we can ask Mr. Price to rejoin us? Okay, what's next before us?
Yeah. Next would be item 33, and that was called special for amendment and motion Raman Hernandez has been submitted and circulated and is now before council now, sir.
Okay, Councilwoman Raman.
Three, I submitted an amending motion and just wanted to strike. In the amending motion, it says authorize a controller and has two bullet points, and the second bullet point, change that date, April 29, to read April 9. I apologize, that was a typo.
Okay, so we can take it up as amended? That's before us. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tally the vote.
14 ayes.
Okay, what's next?
Next is called special, is item 36, and that was called special for an amendment and also called special because Mr. Price requested to be recused.
All right, Mr. Price is off the board and out of the room.
And also, I'm sorry, Mr. President, Ms. Rodriguez has questions on 36?
Yes, I have Councilmember Rodriguez as a speaker on 36. Councilmember Rodriguez.
Matt or CAO's office, if they'd please come up to answer some questions. Hi, good morning. So I have some questions based on some of the information that unfortunately isn't included, that we've requested in these regular reports on the HEA. But I just wanted to kind of take some salient points out of what's been included in the report. So for Table A2, we talked about, you discuss the number of occupancy agreements or the InsideSafe motel contracts by type, which are both by booking agreements and by occupancy agreements, and a time-limited subsidy. Correct?
Kendra Leo with the Office of the City Administrative Officer. The number of booking agreements and occupancy agreement rooms does not include time-limited subsidies.
Okay, so it doesn't include TLS. So of the occupancy agreements, the 466 rooms that you have for occupancy agreements contracted through 2027, those are eligible and compliant for the alliance, correct?
So the nuance is that all the rooms for InsideSafe are eligible to qualify for alliance, but there's only certain contracts that have been extended through the end of the alliance agreement.
So here's my dilemma, because of course eligible is a great word. It's a catch-all word, but it doesn't actually deliver compliance. So I want to get to the bottom line of what is compliant because one of the next conversations we're about to have is issues stemming from the fact that InsideSafe, for the most part, had not been compliant with the alliance, wasn't helping us get closer. So I don't want to talk about eligible. I want to talk about actuals. So actually, at this time, 466 occupancy agreements, 466 rooms through occupancy agreements that are contracted through 2027 are in fact currently what's considered qualifying for the alliance agreement, correct?
They've been extended through the end of the alliance obligation, yes.
Correct, okay. And then, so explain the 216 rooms through occupancy agreements. There's an additional 216 rooms that are listed as occupancy agreements. Are they just not contracted through 27?
Correct. Right now, they're on a short-term agreement, and they're on, they have options to extend for about six months. So right now, they don't have a flat term that extends all the way through the end of June 2027.
Okay, so help me understand. So when you say all of that, because what is going to get us closer to compliance is securing these occupancy agreements with the terms that conclude for June 27 or beyond, correct?
I think right now, the goal is to count all eligible rooms in order to receive.
I know what our goal is. I just want to, we have to talk in terms of, we're in essentially a consent decree. We have an obligation to get compliant with how we're spending our money because right now, we're under duress of having a receivership conversation. So it behooves us to really work in good faith to say, guys, this is what we've established and secured through these occupancy agreements. What's eligible is fluffy language for, well, we're going to try. But my concern is, we have to be very deliberate about what we're doing because the game playing has gotten us here this far. So that's why I want to be really clear about the language, Matt, now that you're here. I want to be very clear about the language, about what is our actual number of rooms that are actually compliant and what has thus far, what are we actually looking at in the immediate term for fulfillment of those, to be compliant with our alliance obligation? Because right now, it's 466. It's potentially another 216, potentially, if we contract it through 27. But the 499 in booking agreements, that's not anything substantive other than providing a short-term solution for us that causes us both the cost of the rooms and the cost of the services. And again, it goes back to, we're in a fiscal crisis. We're in a fiscal crisis, and we want to ensure that we can actually get the county to pay for the services that they're obligated to pay when we have alliance-compliant beds. So the way I see this, the way I look at these numbers, and Matt, correct me if I'm wrong. We've got 466. The county's going to pick up the tab for those services. 216 through occupancy agreements that have not yet been secured for a contractual period through 27, that's kind of in limbo. I'm not clear about where those rooms are going to be in terms of whether or not we secure that contractual obligation through 27, but the booking agreements, that's kind of neither here nor there. That's just us paying twice as much for paying for these rooms, paying for the services, and not getting closer to compliance with the alliance.
So, council member, I think I would think about it in, there are two standards that we're looking to meet. One is our compliance with the settlement agreement, and the other is eligibility for county reimbursement. And that's in a separate MOU, which is not part of the settlement agreement. So clearly, the beds, the 466 beds, as you pointed out, that are extended through June of 2027 are compliant with the settlement agreement and compliant with, and are included in what we are charging the county on a reimbursement basis to cover the services. The other beds are also compliant with the settlement agreement.
The other beds, can you define?
The other beds, the 216 and the 499 in the occupancy agreements and the booking agreements, because they are new beds that have been established, that are serving people experiencing homelessness. They have been established after June of 2022. Now, if, and so as for the quarter, for this last quarter and for this next quarter, we will report those to the court. We will charge the county for reimbursement for the services. And if and when those beds come offline, we would be obligated to replace them with other beds before June of 2027, similar to how we manage the roadmap. We didn't keep all of the beds open, all of the same beds open for all four years. As beds came offline for various reasons, we had to replace them to maintain that level. And that would be the intent. There's not an obligation to keep the other beds outside of the 466 open, but while they are open, we should take advantage of the agreement that, the settlement provisions and the agreement that you have with the county to maximize our reimbursement.
So my concern is, the special master's report indicated that occupancy, excuse me, booking agreements aren't deemed, or aren't, because they're difficult to verify, qualifying under the alliance agreement. So this is why I'm concerned, because we're spending a lot of money at a time when we don't have a lot. And we're setting ourselves up for potentially being at risk of spending money for these rooms that are not garnering any closer to compliance. So again, this is where I'm like, I don't want to conflate how we're talking about these things because people are making real decisions about real money right now that have very deep implications for how we go forward. And I want to make sure that we're not conflating the language and misrepresenting what is actually going to be determined to be eligible for compliance because at this juncture... Because at this juncture, my understanding from the Special Masters report is that they can't verify, they're having difficulty trying to verify the booking agreements and whether or not those rooms are stood up, and like where they are and tracking all of that. So we can either make it easier for ourselves or more complicated. So I just want to make sure, because the rates that we're paying are not only exorbitant, but we're also covering the cost of the services, and we're paying for our own TOT. So we're hitting ourselves multiple times with these rooms. So that's what my concern is. So do the nearly 500 rooms contracted through the booking agreements, oh, excuse me, never mind. So do you intend, or do you have anything in writing that refutes what I'm suggesting to you right now, based on my understanding of what I saw in the Special Masters report? Do you have something in writing that can confirm for the council that in fact the booking agreements would in fact qualify for our Alliance obligation?
So you correctly point out that booking agreements are variable. It's an agreement that if the bed, if there is room available in the particular motel, we are able to use it and to fill it. So we're only paying, so the advantage of the booking agreements is that we're only paying for beds while we are using them. The city is only paying for beds while the city is using them. So for the purposes of our reporting, we, on the booking agreements, we are only reporting the beds for which we have invoices. And so we're using the invoices to show that this bed was actually used for this period of time, and then reporting that to the court, and also then providing our invoice to the county to cover those services. I concede that it is certainly more complicated than having a permanent interim housing resource that we can count on regardless, but that is how we're managing it. So we're only reporting the beds for which we have invoices that they were actually in use.
So now going on to the invoices. Has LSA been providing, because you're suggesting that you don't, or you've reported that you don't have data from LSA for Q3 and Q4 on the expenditures. So my question is, have you had the invoices to be able to verify? And how are you verifying that the rooms are actually being filled?
So we're, the invoices for the leasing, for the rooms, which is, we go, we use LSA for the services.
Okay.
But we directly contract for the leasing.
So you've got all that?
Yes.
Okay. And so then, on the services part, because the services part are helping to actually ensure that they're actually servicing occupied rooms. And yet, you're not able to verify, because LSA's not providing you the data in real time, what these service providers are actually servicing and whether or not there's vacancies in these rooms, correct? That's missing, your funding request, this funding request is based on projected expenditures, not based on real data, because you indicated that on Page 6, this office has repeatedly requested that LSA provide a breakdown of the slot-based budget per encampment as well as updated actuals on service provider costs per person per day, with no update since October of '24.
So that's regarding the Attachment 3, which is the breakdown of how much, how, what the actual expenses are for each encampment resolution.
Right.
However, through, originally through December 31 of 2024, LSA has provided invoices that cover that portion, that service providers have reported their actual costs. And then, as of beginning of May, which was after the release of this report, the invoice for, the initial invoice for Quarter 3 was received. And I want to say that was about $8.3 million. But I don't have, I don't have that information in front of me. But it was, it was only, it did cover January and February, most of February, and then some March costs.
Okay, so you are or are not getting data, because is LSA cooperating in getting you the data, because?
So we are getting expenditures, we're not getting the specific data that's requested in Attachment 3.
Okay, so we're not getting it, okay. And then, on the TLSs, on the time-limited subsidies, they're usually allocated across the spas, the different spas, based on the need. And my understanding is that right now, the majority of the city's TLS allocations are being spent for InsideSafe. Is that accurate?
I don't have that information in front of me, I'm sorry.
Do you know, Matt?
I would, I would need to, I would need to look, I would need to look at that. We are not currently using TLS for our Alliance program. We have been using TLS for roadmap. So I would need, I would need to get the, I would need to look at those numbers and get back to it.
Okay, because I know there was some reporting recently also that discussed, well, it was revealed through the audit that they were unable to verify, in fact, where the TLSs are being used, correct?
In the, yeah, in the review, in the A&amp;M review, there was, there was some conversation, there was some discussion about that. And there are issues related to how LSA was accounting for the slots when we transferred them from rapid rehousing to time-limited subsidy.
Right. So that obviously remains an issue, because if we're using that for our roadmap, if we were using it for roadmap beds, or whether or not we start to, you know, expand that use for the purposes of Alliance-eligible rooms. But it's been revealed that it's predominantly being used by InsideSafe. We already know, based on the reports of where encampment resolutions are happening, that's not happening equitably across the city. So many of our districts aren't actually getting our share of time-limited subsidies to do encampment resolutions, and that's another really big red flag, where we're not all getting access to these services. And yet, it's all of our districts, it's all of our taxpayers in the city. But they're being cherry-picked, and it's a really big problem.
Right, so there's, there are some time-limited, there's time-limited subsidies that are part, that are subject to council approval in our roadmap reports and in our HAP reports that are outside of Alliance. There are some TLS slots which are part of the InsideSafe program that are paid for through the HEA. So those are the issues that you raised, that's specific to the InsideSafe program.
Okay, so have you been able to garner any kind of, and again, you're just the messenger. I understand, I want to clarify, because I think what gets lost in conversation for members of the public, it's because we can't get the mayor's office here to actually report on what they're doing and how they're doing it. So they send the messenger to deliver this for us. So I just, so again, I understand, I got to ask you, and then you got to go ask them, and then you got to come back, and then, you know, I got it. So if you can communicate to them, I'd like to start getting a better understanding of the TLS distribution to ensure equitable distribution across our city for each of the council districts. Because we should all be able to have access to that. So if you would kindly communicate that back up. And then finally, the last time the HEA was here before us...
And Councilmember, we're going to have to come back to you, you're at about 15 minutes now, so. We've got other speakers on the queue.
Okay, I'm just the last one. So the last time the HEA report came through, I asked for the data on the vacancy rates associated with the occupancy agreement rooms, going back to where we started with this. The data was not included in this report, so can you provide this information to us now?
So as of the beginning of this year through about March 31, the occupancy vacancy rates varied between 6% and 10%. That is based on invoices received. So for the next report, we are reaching out to LSA to use their newly implemented room-tracking availability in order to get a better sense of what the vacancy data is.
Okay, so hopefully, the next report will have it.
Correct.
Mr. Blumfield.
A couple of follow-up questions. We're talking about the, I understand the concerns we've raised about the booking agreement. Share some of those concerns. On the occupancy agreements, have the courts signed off on us counting those? I remember learning about those recently, that we were going to count them. But do we have anything from the courts that they're going to count those? I understand the logic too, why they should be counted and agree that they should. But is there a process that we have to go through to get them official?
Well, we submit our quarterly reports to the court with the information requested. And everything, everything that we've reported is consistent with the requirements of the settlement. So we haven't, there are ongoing conversations and ongoing hearings on this matter, but there has not been anything suggested that what we've reported would be disallowed.
Okay, that's good. And then, the bed plan, do we, do we have at this point a formal bed plan of how we're going to get there and how we're going to pay for it?
So that will be, that will be a conversation that we have in this council in the very near future. It is subject to funding availability in the budget, which will be discussed on Thursday, and then supplemental funding that the city is eligible for through McCosser. And once we determine what we believe we can assume in terms of additional funding, we can craft a plan that would, over the next two years, cover the remaining 1,900 beds.
Okay, well, I'll leave it at that for now, I know we're talking about further. Very concerned, we're all very concerned that we get to that bed plan. I am also concerned about whether the courts will accept some of the assumptions that we've made, and hopefully that they will, and we'll work with them on that. And the TLS thing as well, I mean, I suggested that we try to create a minimum for each district to try to have, to spread that out, because that is, you know, I think it's hard for us to know where those TLSs end up. It's very opaque from my perspective. That's it, thank you.
Councilmember Rodriguez. Okay, all right. If there's nothing before us, Madam Clerk, can you restate for the members, what's before us? Councilmember Roman, sorry, Madam Clerk, Councilmember Roman.
I just have an amendment for this item that I wanted to make sure that we're voting on.
Yes, I think the amendment has been received and seconded, so we're voting on this item as amended?
Yes, and I just want to clarify for people, you know, I think are, in my committee and in this body as a whole, and across frankly, the entire system, there's been a lot of frustration with how kind of, how programming has happened on InsideSafe versus some of the other programs that we are running in this city. And I think it's really important for us to make sure that as part of this budget process, that we are really integrating all of our programs under one umbrella, that they're run through a centralized process, and that we are ensuring that we are making decisions about our bed plan that align with our fiscal realities that are in front of us. Unfortunately, because of the way in which decision-making on these issues have been structured in the city for a long time, these issues are fragmented and sometimes opaque for us to understand. Even for me, who I feel like spend so much of my time engaged across all of these parts of the system, it can sometimes be challenging to explain who is in charge of X decision. And that's not just an issue for the city, I mean, that's an issue for the system as a whole. This amendment today is really designed to ensure that our funding of all of these efforts as we move forward is in alignment with what's coming out of the Budget Committee, which I think is cognizant of the fiscal realities in front of us, of the need for us to meet our bed goals. I think that, I think that it is, it kind of makes sense for the context that we're in, and so I hope that I can get your support for it. I know there were some issues and questions raised about our partnership with our service providers, as well as issues raised around our broader contracting process and timely payments. We've made some progress on all of those issues, and I am in close touch with our service provider partners. And I will continue to advocate for their issues to be resolved on this body, even as we are building a more transparent and accountable system. And anybody on this horseshoe, if you have questions about issues that are coming up with your service providers, I invite you to reach out to me or my team, and we're able to kind of problem-solve those as we move forward. So I want to just hopefully get your support on this amendment, to bring it in alignment with what's been discussed in the Budget Committee, and to move forward eyes wide open to hopefully creating a better management system and a better, more transparent decision-making system into this next fiscal year. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember McCosker.
Just a quick question, speaking of opaque. What is the, looking at Page 11, what is the plan next for the grant, the LA Grand Hotel? I see the entries on the money for repairs and for the current operations. But what is the, what is the intention in the out years, or in this coming budget year? Is there anything in the con plan for it, is there anything in the various pots of money for the LA Grand?
There's nothing contemplated in the current funding or proposed funding in the budget for the LA Grand.
Nothing contemplated currently.
There's no funding set aside for anything related to the LA Grand beyond the wrap-up costs that you see in the report.
Great, thank you.
All right, do you want to, Councilmember Rodriguez?
I just, I'm trying to understand what functionally Item 36A provides. And Ms. Roman, and I understand what was proposed in Budget Committee, and I agree with you. There's a deeper conversation that we need to have. It was probably about a year and a half ago that I introduced a motion to create a Department on Homelessness so that we could actually start that conversation to figure out how we centralize it. That still has not been, that report is done, and it's available to have that conversation so that as a body, we can have that policy conversation. Because as a committee chair, not a single one of us has the declared authority to just implement however we design the solution. This is something that we all have to agree to as a body, to better understand what the implications are going to be about how each of our respective districts can access the services that are being provided. So when you say, and I'm trying to understand, because when you say, "Oh, well, if you have problems with your service providers, come talk to me", so I just, I'm confused, because each of us, we talk to our service providers, we can talk to LSA. We can, no, I'm just, I'm asking, because I don't need to take it from the mayor's office to one council office to dictate how we access our resources. I'm just trying to understand what the proposal entails so that we can ensure that we're able to access what we need for our districts. Because as it stands right now with InsideSafe, many of our districts are not being equitably served at all by it. And that's what the goal is. If we're going to have a conversation about huge shifts in how we access these resources, how departments are structured, and where services are centralized and accessed, that should be a conversation for each of us to have a full comprehension of before it's just unilaterally implemented. And that's, that's all I'm asking. So if you can explain, I'm not clear what this does essentially with this, what this amendment does to what the HEA is. I mean, obviously, I have been the no-vote on the extension of the HEA, and I think we have to get ourselves out of it from, you know, from that perspective so that we can actually all be able to control our destinies in our districts and figure out how we can get services. But if you can explain, I just want to know what the amendment entails and what it functionally provides. provides, but also because I'm also concerned about, I'm not looking to take, you know, asking the mayor's office for an InsideSafe operation to having to just go to CD4 to do it, so.
Councilmember Rahman to close.
Clarification was about payments issues for providers, that's all. We've just been able to troubleshoot payment issues, and sometimes an invoice gets stuck at Lhasa, and sometimes an invoice gets stuck somewhere else, and that's all I was saying. I'm not asking for authority on determining how the entire homeless, homelessness response system happens in the city of Los Angeles, and I apologize if I misspoke or tried to convey that. It was really just about providers facing payment delays. We've just been able to troubleshoot those. And all that this amendment does is there is a move in the budget to bring all of our interim housing funding into, for the first, keep our six months of that funding in the UB. Just want to clarify that that's what happened in the Budget Committee, and so this is parallel to that, and would ensure that that six months of funding for interim housing in the UB is able to be spent in the way that this council deems as appropriate as a body, as opposed to committing those funds upfront today, without having that policy discussion in full council. And Councilmember Rodriguez, you know, I think I've been, I've been very honest with some of the challenges in the homeless services system that we inherited. I mean, I came here, and this is how the system has been laid out, and have been making a good faith effort to fix it over time. And my hope is that we can move forward towards a centralization conversation. I think it is really, really important to have, and I applaud you for bringing attention to that, and for underscoring the importance of that. And I want to be able to do that in the city as quickly as possible, even during a period of fiscal crisis, to do it in a way that will help us wrap our arms around our bed plan, our alliance obligations, as well as some of the challenges that we're having with payments, some of the challenges that we're having with differential payments across different kinds of programs. We will not be able to do that unless we move quickly, and so I would encourage us as a body to do that. Thank you.
All right, Madam Clerk, what's before us?
Mr. President, what is before council is 36, and as well as the amendment, and that is motion Rahman, Blumenfield, which has been circulated and is before council now, sir.
All right, so let's open the roll on that item, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes, one no.
All right, what's next?
What, item 43 is next, and that was called special by Councilmember Rodriguez for questions.
All right, item number 43 is our closed session, so I'm going to ask the sergeants if they would prepare the chamber for a closed session. Once they have done that, we'll hear from the city attorney.
The L.A. City Department of Public Works has announced that Commissioner Steve Kang has been elected president of the Los Angeles Board of Public Works. Kang is the first Asian-American to hold this position in the board's history. Appointed by Mayor Karen Bass, Kang's election during Asian-American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander Heritage Month is a notable milestone for the community. Kang's prior experience includes serving as vice president of the Central Area Planning Commission. As board president, Kang will oversee public infrastructure, services, and sustainability projects critical to the city's future. For more information, visit dpw.lacity.gov. Los Angeles World Airport's LAWA recently conducted its full-scale emergency response exercise known as AEREX, the unrehearsed emergency simulation test disaster planning, and is required at least once every three years by the Federal Aviation Administration. Around 400 participants took part in the exercise, including first responders, law enforcement, airline personnel, staff, and about 150 volunteers who portrayed injured passengers. According to LAWA, the test helps the airport strengthen coordination, identify improvements, and ensure it is prepared to effectively respond to any emergency situation. For more info, visit lawa.org/news-releases. L.A.'s Department of Transportation marked the beginning of Dash Pacoima, a new all-electric bus service operating in the San Fernando Valley. According to Councilmember Imelda Padilla, the new route on the Van Nuys Corridor lays the groundwork for a connected and sustainable future across the valley. Councilwoman Monica Rodriguez, who helped secure funding for Dash Pacoima, said that safe, reliable, public transportation remains a priority for the community. Dash Pacoima will operate on weekdays from 6:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., and on weekends from 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., with service every 30 minutes. Fares are 50 cents in cash and 35 cents with a tap card, but to celebrate the service, Angelenos can ride Dash Pacoima free through May 31st. For more information, visit ladottransit.com.
Every day, over 100 Americans die from secondhand smoke. Secondhand smoke in children can cause asthma, ear infections, and increased risk of sudden infant death syndrome. Go to smokefreehomesla.com. Learn how you can protect your home from secondhand smoke.
The L.A. City Department of Public Works has announced that Commissioner Steve Kang has been elected president of the Los Angeles Board of Public Works. Kang is the first Asian-American to hold this position in the board's history. Appointed by Mayor Karen Bass, Kang's election during Asian-American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander Heritage Month is a notable milestone for the community. Kang's prior experience includes serving as vice president of the Central Area Planning Commission. As board president, Kang will oversee public infrastructure, services, and sustainability projects critical to the city's future. For more information, visit dpw.lacity.gov. Los Angeles World Airport's LAWA recently conducted its full-scale emergency response exercise known as AEREX, the unrehearsed emergency simulation test disaster planning, and is required at least once every three years by the Federal Aviation Administration. Around 400 participants took part in the exercise, including first responders, law enforcement, airline personnel, staff, and about 150 volunteers who portrayed injured passengers. According to LAWA, the test helps the airport strengthen coordination, identify improvements, and ensure it is prepared to effectively respond to any emergency situation. For more info, visit lawa.org/news-releases. L.A.'s Department of Transportation marked the beginning of Dash Pacoima, a new all-electric bus service operating in the San Fernando Valley. According to Councilmember Imelda Padilla, the new route on the Van Nuys Corridor lays the groundwork for a connected and sustainable future across the valley. Councilwoman Monica Rodriguez, who helped secure funding for Dash Pacoima, said that safe, reliable, public transportation remains a priority for the community. Dash Pacoima will operate on weekdays from 6:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., and on weekends from 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., with service every 30 minutes. Fares are 50 cents in cash and 35 cents with a tap card, but to celebrate the service, Angelenos can ride Dash Pacoima free through May 31st. For more information, visit ladottransit.com. For more information, visit ladottransit.com.
The number one cause of preventable death after injury is bleeding. Someone who is severely bleeding can bleed to death in as little as five minutes. Minutes count, and your LAFD thanks you for learning how to stop the bleed by following the ABCs. If someone has an injury with blood spurting out of the wound, clothing soaked in blood, bleeding that won't stop, or loss of any part of an arm or leg, you need to act quickly. The first step is A for alert. Have someone call 911. The next step is B for bleeding. Locate the bleeding injury and remove any clothing covering the area so you can see the injury. The final step is C for compress. Use any clean cloth. Apply the dressing directly to the wound and press down hard. Push down on top of the wound with both hands as hard as you can. If blood soaks through the dressing, do not remove it. Add another dressing on top and continue applying steady pressure. Do not release the pressure to check the wound. Keep steady pressure until help arrives.
Hi, I'm Eric Scott, Captain and Public Information Officer for the Los Angeles City Fire Department. Often people ask us really, "What is brush clearance and why is it important?" So simply put, brush fires continue to threaten life and property in the very high fire hazard severity zone. So that means areas that are prone to wildfires. And having brush clearance provides us the defensible space to save those lives and property. So particularly when you're clearing all of those ground fuels or the lower vegetation, that really helps us because it'll present what is called the fire ladder. And that's when the fire starts off low on the ground and it starts to climb upward to where it gets spread by winds. So what you might see is an amber wood land on the ground. It would ignite the grass that is there, what we call is light flashy fuel. Then it's going to jump to those lower hanging limbs or those branches and starts to climb up the tree, ignites that heavier fuel, and that just exacerbates the problem. So this requirement does not apply to your healthy fruit trees or privacy hedges or ornamental shrubbery, as long as that's all well-maintained, meaning that it's free of all dead and dry material. Also, people ask, "Well, what are the basic brush clearance requirements?" So your basic requirements are this. You want to trim the weeds and the grass down to three inches. You need to trim the bottom third of a bush, the bottom six feet of a tree. Now around your home, you'd want to maintain five feet clearance from the roof line. So if you're five foot tall and you're walking the perimeter of your roof, nothing should hit you in the head. And then you want to double that to 10 feet from the chimney, fences, and roadways. It's important to note that these requirements are all within 200 feet of any structure or home, regardless if that structure or home is on your property or adjoining properties like your neighbors. So it's those areas that need to be clear in order to limit the spread of fire and to provide the defensible space for us firefighters to safely operate. So simply put, we'll provide the offense if you provide the defense. So here's your basic inspection process. It begins with the owner's self-inspection. So you want to compare your native brush and your landscape vegetation on your property with the information that you're going to find in the mailer and also on the lafd.org/brush website. Now, if you have difficulties and you're not able to do that yourself, you can hire a professional who can both understand the information and then apply it to the property that you own. But you want to clear your property as required prior to May 1st this year. And that way, you're going to pass the fire department's inspection and you'll avoid a $33 noncompliance fee and also a time-consuming second inspection, which comes with a costly $668 noncompliance fee. So it's important to note too that there's no need to call for an inspection at any time. You don't need to call for an inspection. We're going to do that automatically. Our computer system tracks all the properties that are due for an inspection. So then we'll have an appropriate inspector. They're going to be notified that your property is due and they're going to come in and inspect and/or re-inspect if needed. Now for the first inspection. That first inspection is done by us, the fire department, and it is in May 1st and it continues until June 30th. However, we want people to know that it is a year-round requirement to have brush clearance. And all parcels that are within that very high fire hazard severity zone, they will be initially inspected. Those parcels that are found in violation are going to be issued a notice of violation. And they'll be assessed and that's when you get that $33 noncompliance fee. Then the homeowner has about 30 days to comply with that notice of violation. And the owner can check the status of their property by registering an account at vms3.lafd.org. So now when we come to the second inspection, that means that you as a homeowner were issued a notice of violation on the first inspection. So then you're going to be inspected a second time after that 30-day period. That gives you that grace period of 30 days to correct the violation. Then owners can check the status of their property again by registering your account at vms3.lafd.org. Now, if the property's not fully in compliance upon initial inspection, that owner is going to be notified via mail or email if you're registered within that website that we mentioned. So it's important to also say there's no need to call the LAFD brush unit when you're ready for your reinspection. That reinspection will be automatically scheduled as appropriate with their timeframes. It's all computerized. So if your property remains in noncompliance after a failed reinspection, then it's going to be cleared by city contractors. And the property owner, or you, will be invoiced a noncompliance fee of $668 plus an administrative fee of $1,498 on top of the contractor's fee, so you certainly want to avoid this. We get asked a lot of questions. Here is your top seven most frequently asked questions and the answers. So number one is, "How can I check the brush status of my own property?" Again, that's that important website that we're driving home, the vms3.lafd.org. You could register a new brush clearance account there and check the status. Now use your APN or the assessor parcel number, as well as a PIN, which is your personal identification number. It's going to be printed on the bottom of the owner notification that was mailed to you annually in March. Often we get asked, "Well, what is the best way to contact the brush unit?" Simply put, the best way is to send an email. You send it to lafdbrush@lecity.org. Now, if you incorporate your APN and a brief description of the issue or the problem that you would like to discuss, that greatly assists us determining who you are and what the issue is. And then a member of our brush unit will respond to you within 48 hours. Also, you could feel free to call. It's, the number is 1-800-994-4444. But we do ask for your patience in advance because it's very busy and there's minimal inspectors, so we have limited resources to take your call. But the office hours are from 7:00 a.m. until 3:00 p.m. Monday through Friday, excluding holidays. So what if you received a notice of noncompliance in the mail? What are you supposed to do then? Well, start by reading that notice very carefully. Identify the actual violations that were mentioned on your property. See what was cited there. And then you could follow the steps in the frequently asked questions. The first one there, to see photos that was taken by the inspector of your property and where the problem is. Then you want to correct those violations by the due date. So look at that due date. It'll be located at the top right corner of your notice. Here's another question we get. "Okay, you were issued a notice of noncompliance and now you did the right thing. You finished clearing your property of the violations that you were cited. Now what? What's next?" Well, truthfully, you don't have to do anything at this point. After the allotted 30-day period, a fire inspector is going to re-inspect your property. And if your property is still in noncompliance, then you get that second notice to abate the fire hazard. That'll be mailed to you. Now, the city will start the process to have your property cleared by a contractor at your expense. So you want to avoid that. Some ask if there is a particular contractor that should be used to clear your property. Well, simply put, the city does not provide a recommendation nor do we endorse any contractor. So really, it's you as the property owner. It's your responsibility to request the current proof of insurance, if they're bonded, if they have a license, and obtain any other relevant information about that contractor. But we do try to help. So there is a brush clearance contractor list on the website. So what do you do if you feel that the inspector is wrong and that your property is in compliance? And can you file an appeal? Well, the answer is yes. Yes, you can. Visit the LAFD brush website to view the detailed inspection process, and that includes appeals. However, note that a failed inspection will subject you as the owner to fees that continue to increase with each failed inspection. All billing is conducted through the city's accounting services section. So if you have questions about that concerning your fees or your invoices or any fees that even could be attached to a tax bill, you should direct those to the source. That's accounting. So you could either call them at 213-978-3424 or you could send an email to lafd brushesaccg@lecity.org. We understand that many people might be worried about their neighbor's property and that they might have a fire hazard because of some overgrown brush. And how would you report that? So first off, we want you to know that the fire department wants to hear your concerns so we can provide the clearance necessary for our firefighters to protect your property and your neighborhood. So you can report a brush fire hazard by email to lafdbrush@lecity.org. Now please make sure that you include the exact location of the brush hazards, the address. If you have the APN, that would be even better. But of course, you need to put a brief description of what the hazards are and where those hazards are on the property. And of course, it's best not to go looking at those hazards on that neighbor's property without permission. You also can make your complaint by phone. That same phone number we provided before to our brush clearance unit is 1-800-994-4444. And again, we welcome your complaint, but remember too that we have limited resources to take your call and those hours are from 7:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Monday through Friday.
A heavily scheduled meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.
Here's what's happening in LA this week.
This is LA Current.
This is about all of us. It's about choosing to believe in our city again and proving it with action. And no matter what our city faces, LA never, ever gives up.
It's time for Southern California's largest Memorial Day event and it's free. It's LA Fleet Week 2025. Join the Port of Los Angeles for this annual celebration taking place over multiple days at the port and LA's waterfront. Events include active-duty ship tours, live entertainment, aircraft flyovers, military displays, and friendly competitions like the Galley Wars Culinary Cook-Off. This year is the 250th anniversary of the Army, Marine Corps, Merchant Marines, and the Navy. Celebrations will be taking place over the extended Memorial Day weekend with lots of fun for the family. Head to the Port of Los Angeles for free LA Fleet Week events taking place from Friday, May 23rd, through Memorial Day, Monday, May 26th. For the full schedule of events, check out lafleetweek.com. Join the Los Angeles Public Library to celebrate Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month at the Puyol Pico Branch on Saturday, May 24th. Zazamo Quibelin is behind the Zazamo name. Quibelin is a singer-songwriter who also gives his name to the band he performs with. Together, they play Filipino-American indie pop-rock and they are the first Filipino-American band to appear on NPR's Music 2025 Tiny Desk Contest. Enjoy a unique musical performance in Tagalog at the Puyol Pico Library Branch on Saturday, May 24th at 3:00 PM. For more information, visit lapl.org/events. As part of LA Fleet Week, Councilwoman Monica Rodriguez invites everyone to enjoy a Memorial Day concert in the park on Sunday, May 25th. The concert will feature the First Marine Division Band, which is the regional military band of the US Marine Corps at Camp Pendleton. Other live entertainment will also take place and there will be a Veterans Resource Fair on site. Head to Brand Park and Mission Hills to hear this Memorial Day concert in the park taking place on Sunday, May 25th at 11:00 AM. For more information, visit cd7.lacity.gov/events. And that's a look at some things to do.
Every day, over 100 Americans die from secondhand smoke. Secondhand smoke in children can cause asthma, ear infections, and increased risk of sudden infant death syndrome. Go to smokefreehomesla.com. Learn how you can protect your home from secondhand smoke.
The LA City Department of Public Works has announced that Commissioner Steve Kang has been elected president of the Los Angeles Board of Public Works. Kang is the first Asian American to hold this position in the board's history. Appointed by Mayor Karen Bass, Kang's election during Asian American Native Hawaiian and Pacific Islander Heritage Month is a notable milestone for the community. Kang's prior experience includes serving as vice president of the Central Area Planning Commission. As board president, Kang will oversee public infrastructure, services, and sustainability projects critical to the city's future. For more information, visit dpw.lacity.gov. Los Angeles World Airport's LAWA recently conducted its full-scale emergency response exercise known as AEREX. The unrehearsed emergency simulation test disaster planning and is required at least once every three years by the Federal Aviation Administration. Around 400 participants took part in the exercise, including first responders, law enforcement, airline personnel, staff, and about 150 volunteers who portrayed injured passengers. According to LAWA, the test helps the airport strengthen coordination, identify improvements, and ensure it is prepared to effectively respond to any emergency situation. For more info, visit lawa.org/news-releases. LA's Department of Transportation marked the beginning of Dash Pacoima, a new all-electric bus service operating in the San Fernando Valley. According to Councilmember Imelda Padilla, the new route on the Van Nuys Corridor lays the groundwork for a connected and sustainable future across the valley. Councilwoman Monica Rodriguez, who helped secure funding for Dash Pacoima, said that safe, reliable, public transportation remains a priority for the community. Dash Pacoima will operate on weekdays from 6:00 AM to 7:00 PM and on weekends from 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM with service every 30 minutes. Fares are 50 cents in cash and 35 cents with a tap card. But to celebrate the service, Angelenos can ride Dash Pacoima free through May 31st. For more information, visit ladottransit.com.
The number-one cause of preventable death after injury is bleeding. Someone who is severely bleeding can bleed to death in as little as five minutes. Minutes count and your LAFD thanks you for learning how to stop the bleed by following the ABCs. If someone has an injury with blood spreading out of the wound, clothing soaked in blood, bleeding that won't stop, or loss of any part of an arm or leg, you need to act quickly. The first step is A for alert. The first step is A for alert. Have someone call 911. The next step is B for bleeding. Locate the bleeding injury and remove any clothing covering the area so you can see the injury. The final step is C for compress. Use any clean cloth. Apply the dressing directly to the wound and press down hard. Push down on top of the wound with both hands as hard as you can. If blood soaks through the dressing, do not remove it. Add another dressing on top and continue applying steady pressure. Do not release the pressure to check the wound. Keep steady pressure until help arrives.
Hi, I'm Eric Scott, Captain and Public Information Officer for the Los Angeles City Fire Department. Often, people ask us really, what is brush clearance and why is it important? So simply put, brush fires continue to threaten life and property in the very high fire hazard severity zone. So that means areas that are prone to wildfires. And having brush clearance provides us the defensible space to save those lives and property. So particularly when you're clearing all of those ground fuels or the lower vegetation, that really helps us because it'll present what is called the fire ladder. And that's when the fire starts off low on the ground and it starts to climb upward to where it gets spread by winds. So what you might see is an amber wood land on the ground. It would ignite the grass that is there, what we call is light flashy fuel. Then it's going to jump to those lower hanging limbs or those branches and starts to climb up the tree, ignites that heavier fuel, and that just exasperates the problem. So this requirement does not apply to your healthy fruit trees or privacy hedges or ornamental shrubbery, as long as that's all well-maintained, meaning that it's free of all dead and dry material. Also, people ask, well, what are the basic brush clearance requirements? So your basic requirements are this: you want to trim the weeds and the grass down to three inches. You need to trim the bottom third of a bush, the bottom six feet of a tree. Now, around your home, you'd want to maintain five feet clearance from the roof line. So if you're five foot tall and you walk in the perimeter of your roof, nothing should hit you in the head. And then you want to double that to 10 feet from the chimney, fences, and roadways. And it's important to note that these requirements are all within 200 feet of any structure or home, regardless if that structure or home is on your property or adjoining properties like your neighbors. So it's those areas that need to be clear in order to limit the spread of fire and to provide the defensible space for us firefighters to safely operate. So simply put, we'll provide the offense if you provide the defense. So here's your basic inspection process. It begins with the owner's self-inspection. So you want to compare your native brush and your landscape vegetation on your property with the information that you're going to find in the mailer and also on the lafd.org/brush website. Now, if you have difficulties and you're not able to do that yourself, you can hire a professional who can both understand the information and then apply it to the property that you own. But you want to clear your property as required prior to May 1st this year. And that way, you're going to pass the fire department's inspection and you'll avoid a $33 noncompliance fee and also a time-consuming second inspection, which comes with a costly $668 noncompliance fee. So it's important to note, too, that there's no need to call for an inspection at any time. You don't need to call for an inspection. We're going to do that automatically. Our computer system tracks all the properties that are due for an inspection. So then we'll have an appropriate inspector. They're going to be notified that your property is due, and they're going to come in and inspect and/or re-inspect if needed. Now for the first inspection. That first inspection is done by us, the fire department, and it is in May 1st, and it continues until June 30th. However, we want people to know that it is a year-round requirement to have brush clearance. And all parcels that are within that very high fire hazard severity zone, they will be initially inspected. Those parcels that are found in violation are going to be issued a notice of violation, and they'll be assessed, and that's when you get that $33 noncompliance fee. Then the homeowner has about 30 days to comply with that notice of violation. And the owner can check the status of their property by registering an account at vms3.lafd.org. So now, when we come to the second inspection, that means that you, as a homeowner, were issued a notice of violation on the first inspection. So then you're going to be inspected a second time after that 30-day period. That gives you that grace period of 30 days to correct the violation. Then owners can check the status of their property again by registering your account at vms3.lafd.org. Now, if the property's not fully in compliance upon initial inspection, that owner is going to be notified via mail or email if it registered within that website that we mentioned. So it's important to also say, there's no need to call the LAFD brush unit when you're ready for your reinspection. That reinspection will be automatically scheduled as appropriate with their timeframes. It's all computerized. So if your property remains in noncompliance after a failed reinspection, then it's going to be cleared by city contractors. And the property owner, or you, will be invoiced a noncompliance fee of $668 plus an administrative fee of $1,498 on top of the contractor's fee, so you certainly want to avoid this. We get asked a lot of questions. Here is your top seven most frequently asked questions and the answers. So number one is, how can I check the brush status of my own property? Again, that's that important website that we're driving home, the vms3.lafd.org. You could register a new brush clearance account there and check the stats. Now, use your APN or the Assessor Parcel Number, as well as a PIN, which is your personal identification number. It's going to be printed on the bottom of the owner notification that was mailed to you annually in March. Often, we get asked, well, what is the best way to contact the brush unit? Simply put, the best way is to send an email. You send it to lafdbrush@lecity.org. Now, if you incorporate your APN and a brief description of the issue or the problem that you would like to discuss, that greatly assists us determining who you are and what the issue is. And then a member of our brush unit will respond to you within 48 hours. Also, you could feel free to call. It's the number is 1-800-994-4444. But we do ask for your patience in advance because it's very busy and there's minimal inspectors, so we have limited resources to take your call. But the office hours are from 7:00 a.m. until 3:00 p.m. Monday through Friday, excluding holidays. So what if you receive a notice of noncompliance in the mail? What are you supposed to do then? Well, start by reading that notice very carefully. Identify the actual violations that were mentioned on your property. See what was cited there. And then you could follow the steps in the frequently asked questions. The first one there, to see photos that was taken by the inspector of your property and where the problem is. Then you want to correct those violations by the due date. So look at that due date. It'll be located at the top-right corner of your notice. Here's another question we get. Okay, you were issued a notice of noncompliance, and now you did the right thing. You finished clearing your property of the violations that you were cited. Now what? What's next? Well, truthfully, you don't have to do anything at this point. After the allotted 30-day period, a fire inspector is going to re-inspect your property. And if your property is still in noncompliance, then you get that second notice to abate the fire hazard. That'll be mailed to you. Now, the city will start the process to have your property cleared by a contractor at your expense, so you want to avoid that. Some ask if there is a particular contractor that should be used to clear your property. Well, simply put, the city does not provide a recommendation, nor do we endorse any contractor. So really, it's you as the property owner. It's your responsibility to request the current proof of insurance, if they're bonded, if they have a license, and obtain any other relevant information about that contractor. But we do try to help. So there is a brush clearance contractor list on the website. So what do you do if you feel that the inspector is wrong and that your property is in compliance? And can you file an appeal? Well, the answer is yes. Yes, you can. Visit the LAFD brush website to view the detailed inspection process, and that includes appeals. However, note that a failed inspection will subject you, as the owner, to fees that continue to increase with each failed inspection. All billing is conducted through the city's Accounting Services Section. So if you have questions about that concerning your fees or your invoices or any fees that even could be attached to a tax bill, you should direct those to the source. That's accounting. So you could either call them at 213-978-3424, or you could send an email to lafd brushes at lacy.org. We understand that many people might be worried about their neighbor's property and that they might have a fire hazard because of some overgrown brush. And how would you report that? So first off, we want you to know that the fire department wants to hear your concerns so we can provide the clearance necessary for our firefighters to protect your property and your neighborhood. So you can report a brush fire hazard by email to lafdbrush@lecity.org. Now, please make sure that you include the exact location of the brush hazards, the address. If you have the APN, that would be even better. But of course, you need to put a brief description of what the hazards are and where those hazards are on the property. And of course, it's best not to go looking at those hazards on that neighbor's property without permission. You also can make your complaint by phone. That same phone number we provided before to our brush clearance unit is 1-800-994-4444. And again, we welcome your complaint, but remember, too, that we have limited resources to take your call, and those hours are from 7:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Monday through Friday.
A regularly scheduled meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.
Here's what's happening in L.A. this week.
This is L.A. Current.
This is about all of us. It's about choosing to believe in our city again and proving it with action. And no matter what our city faces, L.A. never, ever gives up.
It's time for Southern California's largest Memorial Day event, and it's free. It's L.A. Fleet Week 2025. Join the Port of Los Angeles for this annual celebration taking place over multiple days at the port and L.A.'s waterfront. Events include active-duty ship tours, live entertainment, aircraft flyovers, military displays, and friendly competitions like the Galley Wars Culinary Cook-Off. This year is the 250th anniversary of the Army, Marine Corps, Merchant Marines, and the Navy. Celebrations will be taking place over the extended Memorial Day weekend with lots of fun for the family. Head to the Port of Los Angeles for free L.A. Fleet Week events taking place from Friday, May 23rd, through Memorial Day, Monday, May 26th. For the full schedule of events, check out lafleetweek.com. Join the Los Angeles Public Library to celebrate Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month at the Puyol Pico Branch on Saturday, May 24th. Zazimmo Quibelin is behind the Zazimmo name. Quibelin is a singer-songwriter who also gives his name to the band he performs with. Together, they play Filipino-American indie pop-rock, and they are the first Filipino-American band to appear on NPR's Music 2025 Tiny Desk Contest. Enjoy a unique musical performance in Tagalog at the Puyol Pico Library Branch on Saturday, May 24th at 3:00 p.m. For more information, visit lapl.org/events. As part of L.A. Fleet Week, Councilwoman Monica Rodriguez invites everyone to enjoy a Memorial Day concert in the park on Sunday, May 25th. The concert will feature the First Marine Division Band, which is the regional military band of the U.S. Marine Corps at Camp Pendleton. Other live entertainment will also take place, and there will be a Veterans Resource Fair on-site. Head to Bryant Park For more information, visit cd7.lacity.gov/events. And that's a look at some things to do.
Every day, over 100 Americans die from secondhand smoke.
We're prepared for open session. We're back in open session. Madam Clerk, if you can call the roll.
Yes. Bloomingfield, Harris Dawson, Hernandez, Hut, Herano, Lee, McCosker, Nazarian, Padilla, Park, Price, Ramon, Rodriguez, Soto Martinez, Yaroslavski, 12 members present in court, Mr. President.
All right. Mr. City Attorney, anything to report out of closed session?
No, Mr. President. There is nothing to report out of closed session.
All right. With that, what's before us, Madam Clerk?
Mr. President, there is an amendment on item 43, and that is motion Bloomingfield, McCosker. The amendment has been submitted. It's posted on the bulletin board and circulated, sir.
All right. So I got Councilmember Yaroslavski and Councilmember McCosker on the board.
On something else after this.
Councilmember McCosker?
I would ask for a friendly amendment to the amendment to include the language "city attorney" and outside counsel.
Yes. All right. So that's been amended. So that amendment by Mr. Bloomingfield, Mr. McCosker is before us. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
All right. What's before us?
The next vote would be item 43, and that is as amended by motion Bloomingfield, McCosker, sir.
All right. Let's open the roll on that item. As amended, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes, one no.
All right. What's next?
Council has motions for posting a referral.
All right. Announcements, Councilmember Yaroslavski.
Thank you. I actually, at the beginning of the meeting, I asked that we continue item 40 for two weeks. I asked instead that we continue it one week to next Tuesday.
Item 40.
40, it's best, cleanest to reconsider 40 and then continue it again. So if, can you?
Continue for a week? She asked for a week? Councilmember?
Yeah.
Oh.
I think she needs a date.
No. Actually, can we, can council reconsider 40 and then continue it to May 27th for a week, sir?
All right. Let's open the roll on reconsideration, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes. And then council member, continue item 40 to May 27th?
Correct. Thank you.
All right. What's next? Any other announcements, members? We got economic development beginning at 2:30 this afternoon. Any other committee changes? All right. Seeing that, seeing no.
Mr. President, and item 40 is continued to May 27th without objection, sir?
Yes. All right. Seeing no other announcements, I'll ask everybody in the chamber to rise for adjourning motions. Adjourning motions to my right on the east side of the building. All right. Seeing none to my left. All right. Seeing none, we're adjourned for today. Thank you.